Okay, we are now live on Facebook and live on Zoom. Well, everyone, welcome to the Wednesday, May 8, 2024, regular meeting of the Coacid School Committee. We're here in person at the Learning Commons. We're also, as usual, virtual through Zoom and in watch-list-and-only mode on Facebook. So we have a pretty healthy agenda going as we are wrapping up the school year or getting close to that. So I'm just gonna jump right into it and do the call to order. Mr. Kearney?
Present.
Ms. Leskey?
Present.
Mr. Carr is absent. Mr. McCullin is going to be delayed. Mr. Dial here. Three out of five does constitute a quorum, so we have a quorum. We can conduct business. And with that, we'll move on to our pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. So we have, this is great. It's lovely to see a school committee meeting with so many people. I think we cheated a little bit because so many of them are presenters, but it's good to see people here.
You're onto something here.
Yes, exactly. We can have more people come. So but that's all I have. We're gonna get right to this because we have a lot of people with us. Our first agenda item will be public comment. This is an area, if you're in the public and you want to comment, the agenda item speaks for itself. This is also for stuff that is not on the agenda. But if you want to say something that is about something on the agenda, you can let us know now and make sure to circle back to. So with that, I'll pause for a cold beat to see if there's any public comment.
At this point, there are no comments online.
Okay.
Anybody here want to make any comments? Not just the online people. We think they're all presenters, but we're not.
So great. So with that, thank you, public, for your comments. I will turn it over to our first invited guest. We are delighted to have a report from the superintendent Student Advisory Council, Mr. Nathan Astrod.
All right, so I just wanted to do a brief overview of your sports, academic, student life. And then you guys, every time I've come up, you've asked me if there could be something that would be improved. And I've never had an answer, so I prepared something.
That could be good or bad.
The bottom of the learning right there.
But as far as sports, it's a little early in the season, so we're not quite in playoffs yet. But boys and girls, tennis are looking pretty good. I've got a few buddies on the team, and they're loving it. They've traveled to some pretty far places, I think, even north. So they play some big towns. Boys and girls lacrosse are having good seasons. They'll be in playoffs. As well as boys, baseball and girls softball, they'll be fighting for a spot in playoffs soon. I'm on the track team right now, so we're having a pretty good season, both boys and girls. We have a meet tomorrow. We'll be having our league championship soon. And then some individuals will probably compete in states. I think it's Merrimack College for us this year for divisionals, maybe meet the champions after that if someone makes it. But as far as academics goes, we have AP exams going on this week into next week. So it's pretty busy around the school right now. I think my students is here, AP Spanish teacher is here. So students are really locking in for those. Seniors' last day is May 24th. That's also when senior prom is, so hoping for some good weather that day. And we've also had some school trips. So I know the senior trip with Europe with the history department went with, so Willis, Coach A, Mr. Welsh, Ms. Hanson's. They took a bunch of the seniors and some kids in my grade to Europe, to a bunch of different countries. I didn't go, but it sounded really awesome, like a cool experience. They visited some cool sites, Normandy, Versailles. Sounded like a really cool experience. And then the Panama trip obviously sounded awesome. I have friends on that as well. We'll talk about that. And then something that could be improved on, I think, we'll leave this up, but the weight room we've been using a lot. And it's been super good, but now that it's lacrosse season, the person who's been supervising the weight room, because you need a little supervision, is he's a Mr. Tango. He's a football coach, assistant football coach, so then he can come in and supervise in the winter. And that's the off-season, so it's very busy in the winter. But now that's the spring season, he's also helping out with lacrosse. So now that he's out there, there isn't really someone to supervise consistently in the weight room. So it's kind of like, it puts kids in a tough spot where they're not really able to come in.
That's really good to know.
We have this new weight room, and it's spent a lot of money on it, but if there's no one in there, we can't even utilize it. And from experience and how the track season's going, I think the weight rooms helped us a lot. A lot of times they're being broken. It's, I think it's pretty noticeable, so.
I'll put that in the category of the likes. I mean, what's Charlie said about the likes? We can fix this one.
Yeah, I don't think it's a hard fix. That's why I said it's good news and you'll like that. But yeah, that's all I have. If you have any questions.
Great. Thank you very much. Mr. Kearney?
Great job. Appreciate it. Good student voice.
Sure. Ms. Leskey?
It's real west, but prom plans, what's the skinny?
Yeah, so prom, it'll be, it'll be the red carpet in town at the Common, I think, again this year. And then they have the pre-prom, post-prom as well. And I know I'm going to prom this year, but there was gonna be conflict with track and field. And I kind of lucked out that I'd miss it by a day, so I'm gonna be able to go and attend that. So I'm looking forward to it. It'll be really cool. A bunch of my friends will come. It's always a good atmosphere. Like I said, if the weather's good, it makes for a good, makes for good pictures and walk down the road.
Well, I'm mostly happy here that the red carpet is still continuing because I know it's a favorite of a lot of, a lot of townspeople coming out to see this.
In the same area, too.
Yeah, great. Fantastic. And thank you for coming to us with a small poem that we need to incorporate.
Yeah, sure.
Good listening.
Thank you, Ms. Leskey. And for the record, I'll note that Mr. Carr joined us at about 6:03. Welcome, Mr. Carr.
Sorry, my apologies for being late, but I listened from the back.
Yeah, no worries.
The floor is yours. Do you have any comments or questions?
No, thanks for doing it. Excellent report. Appreciate it very much.
And I will share the thanks for the committee. I love it that you brought something that we can work on. It sounds like Dr. Sullivan will be all over it. So the only downside is that means you're gonna have to be in the weight room all the time in the super. So maybe you should take advantage of it. So but great. Thank you very much. Very much appreciate the report.
Yeah, sure. Thank you for having me.
Good luck with track. Keep it going. You're just having a great season.
Yeah, so far so good.
So I think next on our agenda, we have an update on the Panama trip with Ms. Nelson and Ms. Kermit.
And if I could, just before they come up, I will talk about Teacher Appreciation Week in my updates, but I have a feeling Ms. Nelson and Ms. Kermit may be not here. So I wanna say thank you to them for Teacher Appreciation Week. This, the floor is yours, and I'll put those pictures up on the screen for you. Thank you for presenting and thank you for this trip. It sounds amazing. I can't wait.
It was amazing.
I can't wait to see the updates.
Extraordinary.
Is there a particular fashion you want me to show this? Should I just hit play highlights?
Great.
So this was the first day that we got there. All the kids had lined up with their posters, with all of our individual names. There's about, did they say?
540 students at this school.
And something that we found out later was that they had actually got there at 6:00 AM. And so they're walking hours from their homes. And they had waited there in anticipation of us coming, but we had gotten there at 9:00. 9:00. And so the teachers had told us that they were just waiting there and waiting there. And then we finally got there, but it was, it was a long trip.
Kearney, tell us how long you were there, just a scope of the trip.
So we were there for the entire week at the community. So from Monday through Friday, we will get there every day at 9:00 in the morning. And we leave at 4:00 or 4:30, depending on the work that we have to do.
Yeah, or 5:00.
For the days that we're working on the cement, it was pretty intense and was nonstop. But we got it done. And that's the thing that we had to finish because you can't wait for the next day, you know, so.
And just her, we flew into Panama City and then took a tiny little puddle jumper over to David. And then we stayed in David and we were actually in Los Lajas. And we would take vans up a mountain every day.
It's about an hour.
Yeah, it's been 45 minutes to an hour and go to the indigenous community, the Comarca, on this mountain. And this was the impoverished community that we were helping to build the classroom and the playground through School the World.
That's super. Do you want me to stop on any of the pictures?
Yes. That's an example of what the classroom, it's kind of similar, similar layout of how the classroom, what ours looks like at least. Oh, that's the cement.
There's so much to say, but we ended up mixing 65 bags of cement. Each bag of cement weighed 42 pounds, and then I had to get it and mix it. So it was a lot of work, but I have to say, like, the work of the students, it was truly amazing.
So can I just, what were you building there? That was a?
That was a playground. So we dug, how many holes? You think like 10?
We dug, well, I would say like, yeah, eight to 12.
Yeah.
So that was to build the playground. And the cement went towards going to the ground in the classroom as well as the basketball court. And.
And all around the classroom on the outside part.
Like a sidewalk.
Have any of you done anything like that before?
I did it last summer in Costa Rica. Not so much as like the mural painting and stuff, but just a mixing pressure.
Yeah.
It was 90 to 96 degrees in full sun every day. They were remarkable. We were so impressed. You know, we were a little nervous at first about stamina and the demands of the job, but I, we were so impressed.
Everybody was pushing each other to keep going and nonstop, and everybody was so kind and respectful.
Offering each other breaks.
Nice to be out of your comfort zone and know you can flourish like that.
We were all super good with like taking care of each other. Like if we noticed that like someone else was tired or like maybe they need to reapply their sunblock, like we would remind them respectfully. But like we were all like trying to work together to make everything happen.
Does anyone want to talk about the kids?
Even with the language barrier, it was not difficult at all to form a bond, really. Like, all of them, they have, they wanna learn language, like English. So like we played a game like Kekalores, so like we found ways to bond and, yeah.
Every day we have like hour, hour and a half to play with them in this huge that field over there. And like the first couple of days, all the students brought like different games for them, like jump ropes or bar boards or playing soccer, Play-Doh, but the interaction was truly amazing.
Because they were a lot more, sorry, they were a lot more engaged than I thought they would be.
Yeah. Could they open up right away?
Not right away, but the second day we were there, it was just like, like they ran up to us and started hugging us.
Like hold your hands, have a bring you around and show you things. Yeah.
Experience.
What would you say the most difficult part was?
Cement.
Cement.
Yes, that's hard anywhere you are.
Just to give you an idea, like the first bags that we mixed was with the mixer, but then others, we had to mix them all manually. So to make one batch of cement is one bag, the 42 pounds you had to add, and we have to count them. 45 shovels of sand, no, 55 of sand and 40 of rubber.
And that can vary.
To do one, so we did 65.
Sometimes we would do like 80 shovels of rocks or maybe like, yeah, yeah. So.
Yeah.
Ninety percent humidity.
Yeah.
Yes. Like some people, like I can speak for myself, I got sick from the heat. But everyone was super helpful, like the nurse that went, she was extraordinary, like she was so helpful and super sweet. And she was always making sure that we were okay.
And there were two, two kind of activities built in through School the World where one was the students, our students, taught, led a lesson in the classroom for their students. So we broke up into groups and the students, our students, went into the classroom and taught a lesson. And the second one was the home visits. We were allowed to shadow indigenous families who volunteered and see the living conditions, the homes, the sort of habits, where they get their water, how they cook their food. And I think that was very valuable.
How many families did you shadow?
Four.
Four, okay. So you're sort of split up and?
Yeah. For the most part, they are farmers or artisans, so we got to do what they do. And they show us how to plant corn and rice, so we did that. And then others, the artisans, they show us how to work the leaves that they have, like, you know, we had to drag it against a tree, and then they get the fibers from that long leaf, and that's what they used to make like hammocks or books or hats. So we get to do that with them and see how they live. And the students, they ask a lot of questions to their family very respectfully because they opened their house to us, right? Now we are their guests. That, for example, there we are shaking rice where they, you know, you have to crush it with a tool that they use. And that's a broom that they make.
Yes. So what we learned while we were there, like the way that they get their water is the water flows down the mountain into like this kind of puddle. And while we're collecting it, we ask like, do you like filter it? No? And do you boil it to like clean it? No? So like this water is obviously dirty, so the bacteria and like can, that is adjusted, can like make the kids sick sometimes. And yeah, and they can get like, yeah, very sick from it.
A lot of the kids have like bloated stomachs because of the intestinal parasites as well, which is probably very uncomfortable.
We also, we noticed a few problems with the kids, like we noticed that they have some skin issues because they probably can't afford help or any kind of medicine. So like a lot of kids like. Excellent. Thank you.
They were so sweet and so kind, and you guys were so wonderful with them, just so loving and so many hugs and games and bonds formed. I think that was sort of one of the takeaways. Not only that you guys went and you were so helpful and you, you know, were immediate, providing immediate help, but also the connections that were made. Like that was so impressive to see, that you made connections with each other, but more importantly, you made connections with that community. It was impressive.
Making the connections, like we were there, our purpose was to help the school. Well, my biggest takeaway was the connections I knew.
And I think everybody was looking forward to that time where we could go to the playground and play with them. It was so much fun. I mean, again, it was very cold, but I don't think that anybody cared about it, just being there with the kids and playing internet with them.
And even the goodbye was really, really sad. Like I, a lot of people like cry, like saying goodbye to the kids. And I saw a few kids crying too. Like you can, even with the language barrier, you can tell that we really did form a true, genuine bond with these kids.
Experience. Fantastic.
And we want to thank you for your support. I mean, we were so happy to be able to do it. And everybody was so supportive, the use of the buildings for the fundraising. It was, it really came together and worked very well.
Thanks to the community.
Truly supporting your efforts.
Yeah, it's great. It was wonderful.
Well, there's nothing else. I'll open up the committee for any questions, comments, Mr. Kearney?
I would just say, we are so proud of you. It's such a learning experience, not only for you guys, for them. And to see Coacid reach out, it's remarkable. And cement is probably the hottest thing I've done in a summer job. It was one bag, and I want to retire.
The School the World employees too were very impressed with our group. They said that they were one of the, one of the top performing groups, one of their favorite groups. They were very impressed. So it was nice to see 19, 18 of the students in the.
Just from the get-go, I wasn't, we were in the plane to Panama, so checking to see that the students are okay. And I start talking to the flight attendant. You can imagine how many flights that woman has done. But she says, this group is amazing. They give me hope.
I also want to say thank, thanks to the parents who had to be worried about you guys. I can't imagine.
Were you able to contact home at all or was this?
Yeah, and the hotel that we stayed at had Wi-Fi.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah, no, the hotel we stayed at was amazing. It was amazing.
A little bit of luxury. I was not expecting that.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney. Ms. Leskey?
I can say, in addition to Mr. Kearney's being proud of you for the work that you did, I'm really proud of you for extending yourselves and being willing to try something new in a new place. And I hope that, and being ambassadors for high school age students in the West and from us, from Marshall and Coacid. But I think also, it seems like you all recognized the gift that you were given in terms of broadening your world and seeing what life can be like outside of Coacid. So well done all around. I thank the teachers for making that possible. Thank you.
So we've Chloe's dad. I think everybody, she had blast. Congratulations. So the fundraising tool, how little clicker about how much they raised, you know, how much you raised? Whole group of the week that went, the whole group that went for that week, over $200,000. Now, there was Coacid, another that went to family. So congratulations. That's a huge effort. I know there are other students in the area, but it's not insignificant. It goes a long way.
No, there were about 30 in the other group, so I mean, that's not, yeah.
It's a big effort. It goes a long way. I have one question. They painted a mural in the classroom, and there's the rear end of an elephant.
So one of my friends on the trip, she, she had this vision. She's like, so I want to do like the backside of an elephant. And I was like, all right. And she started drawing it out, and then she asked me to do it. I was like, okay, I got this. And then I just like, you know, made an elephant butt. It just kind of happens.
They also allowed money on this.
Did it have a symbolism? Was there symbolism in that or just?
No. I mean, the kids probably thought it was funny.
Yeah, there you go. It's like a neat foot tall elephant butt. All right.
Probably put it a little more poetically.
Yeah, don't worry. I did a parrot too.
And I was very impressed with School the World, but they're a great partner. They did a great job. They're very communicative. I stalked them every day on Facebook. Yeah, it was great. Yeah, I never felt worried about your safety, so.
I would say none of us felt worried at any point.
They know what they're doing.
Yeah.
Yes.
And on a side note, I would like to go to the hotel you stayed at, because their motel literally had a pool and the beach.
It was gorgeous. It was a 12-room little sort of, like in.
How was the food?
It was really good. Yeah. It was a different meal every night, drinks every night.
That's great. Congratulations to all of you. And how did Chloe get out of not coming up here tonight? Softball, yeah. Congratulations to all of you.
Thank you for having us. We appreciate it and for all of your support.
And from my end up, I'm not gonna add too much because honestly, this kind of stuff like really is a nexus of things for me. It gives me like right in the feels, like seeing us help other people, seeing you guys grow, seeing all the exposure. Like I start getting a little touched by it, so I'm not gonna spend too much time on it. Other than to say, thank you for volunteering. I hope it was a life experience for you. And to the teachers, thank you for making it happen for our kids. And to the administration, thank you for being supportive of these sorts of initiatives. You know, you can learn a lot of things in school. Like I'm always getting in touch. But you know, these are the priceless experiences that really make you into a person. So thanks to everyone for making that happen. And you know, you've made a difference in a, in a community. I do a lot of, again, I'm gonna stop now, but thank you so much for that, so. So our next item, I will not, I probably will get touched again, but probably not the same way. We have a Coacid Middle School spotlight and learning about the student council.
And I also want to say Happy Teacher Appreciation Week to. Welcome.
Welcome, everyone.
Ms. Ryan, Ms. Jewel, shall I share the presentation at this point?
Sure.
Okay. Yep. So I just want to thank school committee for inviting CMS back as a spotlight on the school. If you remember, a couple of years ago, I think we were at Wilka Commons. Ms. Jewel and Ms. Ryan had kind of worked to reorganize our Stuko, our student council, to really enhance the role of student voice and to be more inclusive and have even more students involved and active. So we thought this would be a great time to sort of circle back and show you how far we've come. So with that, a little introduction, I'll turn it over to our advisors and some of our members. Just give me a nod if you want me to change.
Okay, awesome. All right, so we can keep going. All right, cool. So we just wanted to kind of give you a kind of a glimpse into how we present student council to our student body.
Before we get into the room, just for people, were your introductions?
Oh, sure. Sure. I'm Paula Jewel. I teach seventh grade science.
I'm Erin Ryan. I teach seventh grade social studies.
I'm Julie LeBlanc, seventh grade.
I'm Taryn Tazensky. I'm in seventh grade as well.
I'm a sixth graders in and I'm also in seventh grade.
I'm Clint Jansen. I'm also in the seventh grade.
I'm Miles Gardner, sixth grade.
And we're, we have many other members that weren't able to join us.
Thank you all for coming.
Yeah, my pleasure. So yeah, so we go through a little presentation at the beginning of the year for all of the student body before we start even our election process. So we thought we'd kind of do something similar, but then a little twist so that these guys can kind of take the floor and talk about their student experience. And then we'll pipe in with some places that we are particularly pleased about growth that we've seen from students. Slide.
So this is the vision that you saw, that we've tweaked only a little bit over time. And it's a vision we're proud of because it talks about being inclusive, being representative, working toward collaboration, not just between the different grades, which was something that we really wanted to make happen, but also communication across student, faculty, administrative bodies. And I think that that's what we've been able to do, which has been wonderful. And it's been great to take a little bit more of a step back and allow the students to really take this thing and run with it.
That was our pinky swear with each other. It was like, let the students go and we'll, we'll trust it and we'll find it. They exceeded our expectations as they always do, so it was awesome.
Yes, thank you. So this is our, it looks very complex, but it is actually quite simple. But we share this with students to help them understand that they, you know, us together as faculty and students, we are the base. We, we make the base. And what the big change for us was, when we came up with the new structure, was to provide leadership opportunities at all three grade levels. So it used to be only eighth grade, and we said, you know, you want to hear from other people. And then we expanded the number of officers at each grade level. And then we advise, and then we work with our administrators to make sure that everything happens.
All right, so our roles here are, we have our president-elect, we have a communications officer, secretary who's there to help us make sure that we're taking all of our notes at our meetings, to record our records. And then we have student ambassadors who are talking with students and representing them. And then we have a new, you can actually hit the next one.
Yeah, if you click one.
Yeah, we have a new role this year, events coordinator. We actually got this from feedback last year.
So the weather bug.
Yeah.
So we got this from feedback from the students last year. They said, you know, we plan a lot of these events. How do we coordinate this? Maybe this would be an important leadership role. So we said, absolutely, let's build it in this year. So we now have five representatives from each grade. So it's a quite a large student council at 15 for our middle school. And then we also open it up to the student body, so anybody can join us for our meetings. They're always welcome. And we've had so much incredible insight and help from our members too.
For sure. So we, this year developed this slide to make it very clear that the three P's. So we need people to participate, so, and you can see just a representative of the kids tonight, that they are active members, and they certainly are. They have great ideas. We kind of debate through our ideas. We talk about the practicalities of things. They come regularly to our meetings, even when we throw you a curve ball and we change the day. Sorry about that. We announce everything. We try to make sure that we have other folks that come in like, oh, I'm just interested in doing the dance. Great, come on in and tell us what you want to do. And there, I would say that passion is probably the best thing that we have going and that kids do come in, they really do have great ideas. And a lot of times it's us just sort of being like, yeah, let's go, get out of your way, and you take it. So these are just our expectations that we share with the kids when we present.
So these are some of the things we've been super excited about this year that we've been able to do. We were able to assist the CHS football team during their food pantry food drive. We actually built that into our own school. We set a goal. We met that goal, which was so great. And ended up with this fabulous movie day and jam day in the auditorium. We had a fall spookiness day.
Great doors.
That was very cool.
Terrifying.
They did a fantastic job. It was such a cool thing to see. And then there's our Snow in the Dark dance, which was such a hit because it was so cursed. Yeah, it's our first time, but hopefully not the last because it was a really fun time for the kids to be. Yeah, it's our first time, but hopefully not the last, because it was a really fun time for the kids to be in the space where everything that was neon is glowing.
Yeah, and we actually had this at Deer Hill, because we've learned that having dances in our caf is not good for students. So, yeah, and the gym is not available at this time of year because of basketball, so we were like, hmm, where can we go? So thanks to everybody at Deer Hill for accommodating us, and it was such a fun, nostalgic thing for kids, they were really into it, so it was great.
They definitely respected the space too. So great to see, so it was a great cooperation.
That was the feedback I received too.
Good.
Well done.
And then we did a spread the love campaign, even when things got a little dicey with the weather, we were able to pivot, still make sure that we were handing things out, and making sure that everybody got a little taste of a little sweet candy pop that day at lunch, so we spread the love on our Valentine's Day campaign, and we are currently preparing for our final big event this year, which is our spring fling dance happening at the end of this month.
Don't forget the Wheel of Destiny, that was a real.
Oh, the Wheel of Destiny, it was great, so.
This is their idea, it was so cool.
So, yeah, who came up with it?
That was so fun.
It was so fun, as it came up with it.
Yeah, so yeah, so we had literally one of those wheels that you spin to like, you know, your prize is going to be, and then they spin the wheel, and we had all the movies listed on it, and every day we would eliminate a movie. And so there was like, coin, motion response to somebody.
Especially because I pull for a teacher's choice.
Yes.
Like you could hear the roar.
Me too.
You could hear the roar down the hall, it was like, what is going on?
That was really fun, that was new.
I still have that wheel.
Oh, we're using it again.
Oh, yeah.
This is so great, though, it's built such a community.
Yes.
And it really does build a culture of the school.
That's our.
Such, so important.
For sure.
Good to see.
So just some photos, that's most of the gang, I think we're missing a couple of folks, kind of a casual photo, not our official yearbook photo. But that's most of the gang, and nice, you know, six, seven, and eight, and they really look at things very differently, grade to grade, that's one of the things that I always think about, is like, they really have different perspectives, depending on where they are in their student experience. So it's really valuable for us to do that. So speaking of student experience, and there's just a couple of bullet points to remind kids what we were hoping to hear. And, you know, as you are comfortable guys, so like, why did you run or join, what's been your experience, and what skills do you think you've gained or further developed? Anybody want to start?
Jump in.
Sure.
Take one.
I didn't want to say something on, yes, we have five different positions for every grade level, but we work as a team really well, and we will help each other, with their position when needed, and I think we just really work as a team really well, and just to execute things, yeah.
So we'll say things like, we all hands on deck, and we need a certain number of kids up here doing this, and some here, and some there, and I'll do this, I'll do that, I'll do this, like, it's been extraordinary how comfortably they step up now. Like in the beginning, it's a little tentative, we're not so sure, now, I mean, they are just jumping in, we have some, we have some great examples of that. Thank you so much, Clint, does anybody else want to share theirs first? Thanks, Delaney.
Yeah.
So say what your role is too, because this is really cool.
So I had been president last year, and then this year I ran for law, so I joined on subcommittee, so I've been going to meetings, so really liked it, and so participate pretty fully. So.
You participate amazingly. Yeah, yeah, and that's one thing that we were very committed to, that even if kids didn't make it through the election process, that they could plug in anyway. And Delaney is a phenomenal example of that, she volunteers all the time, she uses all of hers, she's very good with like creative things, and Canva, and helps to make our little video.
That's where everything gets done, isn't it?
Yeah, exactly, so, and that's what we always say to them, is like.
If you want to get stuff done, do it yourself.
Congratulations.
So, yes, so Delaney does a super job with that. Anybody else want to share? Miles, thank you.
I was sixth grade president, and I, it was really fun, because when I signed up, I wasn't expecting all that much from it, but it was really fun, because especially I could lay out my creativity, and like, I was free to express myself, and it was really fun coming up with ideas.
And I think Miles is a great example of learning that super essential skill of the give and take. Like learning like, okay, I want to hear about everybody, and then I'm gonna, I'm gonna be flexible, and I think Miles is really a super example of becoming flexible. And I will say at our Snow in the Dark Dance, I've never seen a person move faster than Miles, putting up snowflakes, like unbelievable, it was like a blizzard happening.
I thought you were going to say it was dancing.
And also an awesome dancer. So, yeah, so super representative of our sixth grade group, and somebody showing a lot of growth, we appreciate that. Yeah, anybody else want to point that? Charlie?
It's like a great, like, opportunity to like be leadership, and just be involved around the school. I was on subcommittee last year, and this year I'm elected, and I'm a student ambassador seventh grade, and it's just really great.
Thanks, Charlie.
That's great.
And Delaney, you know that you are a member, but what was some of your experiences that you can think about?
Yeah, I really liked getting to like help plan dances a lot, it's been fun, and like also just coming up with ideas for like spirit days and stuff, and like seeing people around the school, like be excited about spirit days and dances and stuff, and like asking you about, like giving you input for it, I think it's like really how we become more of a leader and like gain more skills just for life.
Yeah, for sure, for sure, thank you. Anybody else want to point that?
So, I ran last year for Student Council, but I lost, I went for president, so this year I ran, I got events coordinator, which I'm very happy about. So, I think, so last year I joined super late, so they still let me join, that's one of my favorite parts about Student Council, the timing is just so flexible, they let you in no matter what. So that's a plus.
And it definitely teaches and helps students recognize resiliency, this idea of, look, because I ran for office every single year in high school, lost every single time. When I got to college, and I ran again, and I got in, so it's interesting to think about how you can run and not get that election win, but it teaches you to keep persisting, keep pursuing, and yes, it's very important to us, I think, to hold on, because we have so many incredible people running, and not everybody's going to win their election, but at the same time, they're winners to us and to the entire school and our entire community, so to have everybody join us is the dream.
Yeah, absolutely, and I think what's, one of the greater takeaways for us is that I think kids learn that the success is in the working, that it's like you actually have to get it done, so let's come together, and this year has been extraordinary, so my daughter, who's twenty-one, was afraid of making phone calls in middle school, like afraid, even if food was on the line, she's not going to do it, right? But these guys, so we set up, so we were getting ready for the dance, and we raffled to support UNICEF. So we ask area businesses to support us, and we help them make the list, and then we're like, see ya, and they are literally in the hallway, like, you know, working it, and making calls, and we are getting like ridiculous gifts from these businesses, because these guys are doing the ask, and they're super responsible. Like Miles shows up, he's like, I'll finish that poster, and then Karen shows up, he's like, do I have to make that call now? I'm like, yeah. And Charlie the other day was like, what were you working on the setup genius? Yeah, so we just put it in the notes, and these guys are like cranking it out, so it's really, really awesome.
Sounds like, it seems like a lot of positive energy.
It is a lot of positive energy, and a lot of leadership and growth, I think, that the kids are showing, and they're trying things they haven't ever done before, and that's really exciting to see them like step into that role, and really, I love the way you said that we like support each other, we just jump in. Like I wouldn't say you would call yourself like a perfect poster maker guy, but you like really jumped in, like anytime, it's like, we need a third person, you just do it, so we love it, love it.
Could I just say that too, and I appreciate Dr. Sullivan's recognition of teacher appreciation, and this is also advisor appreciation, because.
There's going to be a date for that, Stella.
Mrs. Ryan, Ms. Jewel have done this amazing job of not establishing this is what StuCo does, and every year we just do the same, this is the tradition, this is what we do, A, B, and C. Instead, what she's done is made it brand new to students every year, so students bring in their voice, and they're continually thinking of what would be fun, what would make our experience great, and they really empower the kids. You would think this late in the year, it's okay, it's just the last dance, but a few weeks ago, Ms. Jewel and Ms. Ryan emailed me to say, hey, the kids were wondering if on Friday afternoon at dismissal at two fifty-five, can you just play music over the podcast, so they can walk out to the, and it's like, we've never done that before, but that's an awesome idea. So you guys do an amazing job empowering truly creative.
Thank you, bro.
Really positive and engaged students, who we're so lucky to have.
Yeah.
Yeah, some photos for fun at the end.
Sure.
And I think that's our food drive.
Yeah, we asked Mr. Marr to help us out as well, so he was the ref there, encouraging us to try to reach the end zone, so as many items as we had, four yards, we were trying to get, I think we were trying to get.
That is still funny, because when I saw him in the back of the picture, I thought it was Mr. Marr, but then I thought, am I saying it, and it's not. It's good to hear that, it's good.
Yeah, and we definitely reached our goal and then.
And exceeded it, it was like, it was amazing, they killed it. I think next is. That is Spirit Day, December Spirit Day.
Yep.
So, you know, we made it wide open, because we didn't want to like make it wear your red and green, because that's inappropriate, so we just made it wide open, like wear whatever you want to wear, that feels festive to you, and that's what everybody.
Rachel Mills looks like a game show host.
It was intense.
Imagine when you can find it savers.
It is the source of all interestingness.
That's great.
And I think next is our. Yes, Snow in the Dark, and that was a student idea, and then we just carried it along and made it happen, and it was, I think, one of the best events we've ever had, kids had a blast. I've never seen so many sweaty children running around, dancing their heads off, it was awesome.
Did you get?
Oh, sorry, the suggestion box is another student idea, and we clean it out weekly, we go through everything, we record everything, we talk about like, what can we do and what's not feasible here, what do we bring to Mr. Mills, that's where the music came from.
Yeah, someone said, wouldn't it be nice if, and honestly, what a great example of organic creative thinking, let's have a space that's safe, because not everybody wants to approach us if they have a question or they have an issue, so let's make this a thing, you know, that form that's sitting right there on the desk that was designed by students.
That's a Delaney special.
All of this is because of these incredible students we're working with, so we can be more grateful.
Anything on your mind, help me out.
Thank you very much, I'll turn it over to the committee, Mr. Kane.
Wow, this is awesome. I lost a couple, like concerning Mr. Lincoln. I love that, I love taking yourself out of the comfort zone and getting out there, some days you're going to have to ask people to vote, and then they have to ask you why you want me to vote for you, and it's going to take you to new levels. I'll tell you too, as a business owner, this is how people run businesses, this is how we do it. I mean, it's a collaborative thinking way to get the same common goal, so these are what you guys are doing, and Mr. Mills, thank you so much, because the biggest thing I can say on this committee, and I see these proud, I see proud administrators, is the middle school.
Oh, yeah.
I think we're going on our fifth year this year, correct, and I have to say, as a school committee member, it was the best thing that ever happened to this town, this league, middle school, it's old, it's a school, it's up. You guys are whole, like, yes, it's true, and thank you for that, and thank you, and it's been a really nice part of the projects, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Kane.
Getting emotional, I'm sorry.
I love everything about this, I love these teachers who I know, I love these kids who I've watched grow up, so truly just watch what you're doing and working on, the fact that this is project based, that it's community based, that it's collaborative, there's so many life skills learning there, and then I'm just struck, it's very obvious, but struck by the way in which you sitting here today is mirroring what goes on in your own hometown in terms of having a responsibility to your community, being involved in your community, being civic minded, and I think that those seeds, I hope, are planted for you, that this is such a fun, positive experience, but you know what, one of these days you could be sitting in one of these chairs listening to students, and that's, it's a really cool thing, and that's where those kind of things started. It started for me there, I was on Student Council through middle school, and I lost in eighth grade. Yeah, so those losses are hard, but you will end up in office again, and you can always participate, even if you're not an elected official, which I think is one of the things that I really appreciate that Ms. Ryan and Ms. Jewel do, that the idea that participation is for everyone in the community, and that's huge, so thank you, thank you, thank you all around.
Thank you. And how wonderful it was to see Nate here, because he was our president. So, we'll see in high school.
Great things that you, all of you in high school.
I would think in a few years down the road, some of these guys might be reporting on their trip to Panama or somewhere else.
Absolutely, I can totally see that.
Great.
Mr. Carr. Congratulations. So we actually think, you know, government is cool. That's awesome. I hope you enjoyed it, I hope you go on to do it again. Has anybody been the secretary? See, I don't know if you can see this on the secretary, I'm really kind of chromie at it. It is a very hard job, there's a super nice lady named Kathy Bach that helps us, and she's watching from home, and we would be lost without her, but if you ever want something cool to do on your committee, that's actually a pretty fun job. And for the work, so I don't get, think about maybe running again, when you get to high school or whatever you want to do, but I think when you can serve the public, it's a pretty cool thing. So congratulations, I chose it as my job, and so I like public service, so keep doing what you're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Mr. Bryant, Mr. Blas here for the record, Mr. Blas joined us at six forty for the minutes, but it was fun. Hello, for yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I think it's great all of you to be involved like this, it's a great way to use your skills to help others. It's why I do School Committee, I really enjoy engaging in public service, and trying to effectuate meaningful policy changes or some tangible, visible improvements to the school district, and it's a really fulfilling enterprise and undertaking. So I hope that you guys are feeling that, you know, a lot of fulfillment from the positive changes that you brought to your classmates, and I'm sure that they all appreciate that as well. I remember we had a spotlight on learning on this not too long ago, it may be longer, but thank you for everything.
Three years.
Okay, three years, and I remember at the time, I was so impressed with with how both of you have structured this and have sort of approached student government, and then we had exchanged some emails on it, and I had encouraged you to actually take it to like a more statewide or national stage, because I think that it is that remarkable. I don't know whether it's sort of a trend now, and we're seeing more districts do this, but what you've done is you focused on, you know, student interests, and, you know, taking initiative for oneself, and you've placed the emphasis on that as opposed to popularity contests that are oftentimes what student government elections are, especially for younger people. And it makes it, I think, the experience a lot more robust and meaningful and educational, because, you know, you have, I understand you have like the more standard roles, but you also have like press secretary, they're like a public relations person too.
There's an events coordinator.
Okay, so, exactly, so that's amazing, right, because you're now looking at like the more specific interests that students have, and ooh, you know, I, well, president, what's that, I don't know, but I sure do like to plan events, right, and so I could maybe run for that, and I'm going to submit, I don't know if you still do it the same way, because I recall you have the students submit like sort of statements, and then you select the candidates that people were going to vote from, so, which is a really cool way to control the process anyway, and make sure that you're sort of presenting candidates that have already sort of proven themselves in terms of, you know, aptitude and interest for the position.
Absolutely.
Which is really awesome and creative and super clever, and I don't know if you guys thought of that on your own, but it's really awesome. Well, you know, you should take credit for that, I think you should take credit for that, and I'm telling you, I still feel to this day, like I oftentimes think, and I just forget to honestly, follow up with you about that, I would really encourage you to broadcast this, this, you know, method, you know, it's, there's so many advantages to it, and it's really powerful, and I really think that if more schools did that, you'd get a better educational experience, and also I think that you'd end up seeing like people that have an interest in government that may not have, because this is the other thing that it does, maybe this is the best facet of the way that you do this, is that maybe I'm someone that is like a little bit more reserved, I, you know, I'm not really an extrovert, but I'm. I, you know, I, 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 you know, I'm not really an extrovert, um, but I'd really like to do this. I'd really like to get involved in public service one way or the other, but you know what? I'm not gonna put myself out there. This is a great solution to that. It's a great answer to sort of, you know, um, I think derive a lot more participation from voices that may not otherwise have been heard from.
Absolutely. And we have a couple of members that immediately spring to mind for me when you say that.
So, so they're great. That is so important. What if that person grows up to become a congressman or something like that? Because you, you know, and I, I know it's kind of like a crazy, extreme example, but like, or just, you know, I don't know, some meaningful public role because of that interest that was fostered when they did student government in middle school because of the way. So I really would still encourage both of you to take it on the road to the state seriously. I'm really serious about that. I think it's a huge benefit.
Fuck that bill.
At least statewide, at least, at least, I don't know, like to Tedeschi or something like some explaining, like it's a really, it's something that should be emulated. It's something that should be replicated, um, I think at least Commonwealth wide. Um, I'm super proud of you guys and I'm super thankful for, you know, both of you. So it's very long-winded, but I feel strongly about this. And I saw it on the, I saw it on this, on the agenda when I was looking at this a couple of days ago. And I immediately was like, oh, I love those guys. My favorite, so.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. That was long-winded.
It was.
Ah, but, uh, so I, I certainly echo all those comments. Definitely appreciate your, um, your, your pushing this forward. And I also agree that you come up with a very unique way of encouraging, uh, student participation. I loved the comment of, oh, I was a little late, but they let us in. Like this, this is great. You bring, you bring everybody into the fold. And it's not just about elections because two thousand and one, I lost an election by one vote. And they asked me if we want to do a recount. And I don't know if people remember, then that was just after two thousand when we had the recount of Bush and Gore. And I was like, no, we're not gonna go through that. I'll just, I'll just, I'll just stay back. But then there was no spot for me. Uh, but here you have someone who loses by one vote and they can still be, still be involved. And, and you're getting, it seems like you're getting some great ideas and, and great cultural building, you know? Playing music and people leave, that, that's not something I would, I'm gonna start doing that now. This is great. So this is, this is a thing that is working, it seems. So, and, you know, for, for those of you who are participating in this, they're gonna look for these lessons. Look for like, and, and Mr. Cunney made the, made the point that the subcommittees are where the, where the things happen. It's very true that people who come in and do the work are the ones who really are the ones, you know, you know, shaping what happens next. So it's not always just the presidents up top and that's, that's the only, that's not the way to have influence. The way to have influence is just going and being committed, using your three Ps, uh, which also I love, I love that as well. So thank you for, uh, for, for being here, for presenting this. I think this is a great idea. Share Mr. Collins' zeal for, for what you've come up with. Uh, and I look forward to seeing it grow. So.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great job, you guys. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mills as well.
So we've, um, gone through our five guests. Let's see, five guests is always my, my favorite part of, of our school committee. It reminds us why we're here and what we're doing. So, um, now I'll go to my least favorite part, which, no, I'm kidding. It's not, it's not. It is Dr. Sullivan. Uh, but it's not my next favorite part. Um, I'll go to my next favorite part of the, uh, of the, of the agenda, school updates with our super good at schools for now. Dr. Patrick Sullivan.
There's someone out there, this must be their favorite. Um, well, I wanted to just highlight some great, uh, events that happened over the last, um, couple of weeks. We did put them in the newsletter, so I'll go kind of quickly. But, uh, we did have an electric bus ribbon cutting ceremony that was, uh, just wonderful. And I, I want to thank Mr. Carr for his incredible work organizing this behind the scenes. And, um, of course, Tanya Bordell, uh, head of the Alternative Energy Committee, who did so much work. Yeoman's service to classic schools in classic town. Um, we had Gene Hill Dipold, um, I was there. And then we had Chris Senior with Doc. You can see, uh, his, his dog, his new dog there. Uh, and, um, we also had a gentleman from, um, Anderson.
Anderson Motor Coaches.
Anderson Motor Coaches. Who, uh, provided the coach, uh, the actual coach, the bus for us. Um, really nice day and, uh, a great experience, mostly because we have students joining us. So we had, uh, some green team members and some other classes came out and were able to take the first maiden voyage on the, uh, bus. And, um, we had a ceremonial ribbon cutting. Um, I did, uh, taught the students to say we were gonna order eighty-five Frappuccinos from Starbucks. They liked the idea of that, but I didn't do it with everyone, so I'm just saying now. Um, but it was wonderful, uh, wonderful experience. And, you know, look for this to, uh, be a, a keystone in many alternative energy, uh, upgrades in Cohasset. And I think we're setting the trend in a lot of ways. Not a lot of communities that have electric bus. And, uh, we are one of them. So great job, everyone who was involved. It was really nice.
I would also say that it's nice to see going by Cohasset actually having electric buses to like the rest of the world. Three A and you can see that bus.
It does stand up at prom.
It really does.
You can see it plugged in right there.
Yeah. I also would like to mention, the food was fantastic.
Oh, Mr. Cardon.
Yes.
Food services.
Fast. I mean, I turned around.
Well, those kids saw that and they said, hey, wanna bite? And they said, yes.
Yeah, they might have had a few sandwiches up there for me, but not when we invited the kid to.
They just kept commenting how delicious it was.
Yeah, they did a lovely job. And, and the whole thing was set up really well. And, um, yeah, and they did play the electric slide as we cut the, uh, cut the tape, which is appropriate, of course. And, uh, nice, nice experience. Thank you again, Mr. Carr. We had a lovely Ausgood Arts Night I was able to attend and, um, I always love this arts night. It's, it's a great showing by our community. Uh, Principal Farrell and team really do a lot of flair. Um, have food trucks there and, uh, it's a great community day. And they're able to see the, the lovely student artwork that, um, was put together. Great job by the art teachers. And, um, they're just, uh, showing us some pride there, uh, pointing out at her, her painting, which I guess is at the very top corner. And, uh, you can see I was sort of set up in the, uh, in, in the gymnasium. Really nice activity. Uh, this is actually, I, I didn't put a title on this, but this is our Ausgood Math, I mean, Deerhill Math. This is one of the third grade.
Uh, yeah, this might, they, so there was third, fourth and fifth on different days. And the families came in and the students actually are teaching their family members, uh, the games. And, um, which was really nice. They did that for about an hour or so. And then, uh, children were, went back to their classrooms. But then the math specialist, Ms. Monet and Ms. Carney did a presentation. So parents have the option to stay and learn more about the Bridges math curriculum and they ask great questions. And, um, it was just a really nice, about twenty minute presentation for families. So it was really successful and the turnout was amazing. And, uh, and they have, they have a lot of fun.
Yeah, the interactive component of this is very successful, so very happy about that. And we had a Cohasset Hearts for Autism celebration at Ausgood.
Wonderful night.
I know you were able to attend that, maybe you could speak to that a bit.
I was. It was wonderful. There were lots of families there. We had, um, we had staff from both Ausgood and Deerhill there. And you can see kind of in the corner, some Deerhill staff. And they had different tables, so students could participate in all the different kinds of activities. I know, uh, Savanka was there too.
Yes, it was a great turnout. It was really just so well received and so much fun.
Yeah, all the kids, it was just, it was just really lovely. And just all the activities and just the celebration of being together. Yeah, it was just, it was really awesome playground. It was just fun.
And I love the idea of celebrating neurodiversity, which doesn't include diversity conversations enough. And I think it's something that, um, you know, not only in Cohasset, but everywhere we can really look at and celebrate.
And this was to educate the kids about autism?
If, if you remember our last, uh, school committee meeting, I, um, talked about how Candace Hart and Bree, it's not Larson.
No, it's Bree. No, Bree.
Casey.
Casey. And I want to apologize. Uh, Ms. Casey, I think Bree Larson is a famous movie actor. So I made some errors there. I did, did correct it, but I, I, I almost feel like I should call her and apologize. But I put it in a couple of newsletters as Bree Larson. I, I changed it, so. Uh, but I do apologize, but they did a lovely presentation to the first graders and this was a follow up to that.
Yeah, so there were all different kinds of things they could do. Yeah, there were things around speech and, um, and then some things on visuals. And there were just all different things that kids could participate in. Um, and it was, it was lovely. And then the parents, I think one piece that really was, uh, resonated for me was the parent connection. Families there, they could communicate with other family members and, and make those connections. It was always nice to have partners, always nice to have families that, um, you can talk with that may be going through some of the similar things or having some, um, looking for resources. It's just always, I always loved having, um, family support.
Absolutely. And it was, it was such a nice mix too.
Really was.
You know, all kids were there.
Yeah, it was everybody's crazy.
And then we've had a, a series of, uh, acknowledgements, um, that, you know, you have these national days. We had School Lunch Hero Day. It gave us a chance to go and thank our, our school lunch heroes. And it's a great, really great crew. And there you have, uh, Mr. Codon over to the right and the middle high school, some, not all of, but a good amount of them, um, just do a wonderful job. Um, then we have, uh, I was only able to capture one. I did say thank you to every one of them. But, uh, uh, one of our amazing, um, Ausgood food service workers and then the team at, uh, Deerhill over to the right there.
It was pizza day.
It was pizza day. And, and the pizza looks and tastes delicious. Yeah. It's, you know, pizza we'd all eat. It's delicious. So it's a good thing. So thank you. And then it was National Principals Day as well. And, uh, this picture is, uh, it looks like they're going to be hit by the bus. They're not. Um, but it's a, uh, it's, it's a pleasure working with the four amazing principals we have in Cohasset. Cohasset should, uh, feel very fortunate. They're very caring individuals who are very good at craft. So nice to work with them every day. School Nurse Day is today. Uh, I didn't, wasn't able to put any pictures in it because I had this kind of setup. But, um, thank you to all of our school nurses for everything they do. And this week is continually, as I mentioned, uh, thanking the teachers presented today. Teacher appreciation weekend. We'll, we'll do some acknowledgement for them nice on Friday. So thank you very much for everyone who teaches our students every day. They really, uh, that relationship between the, the teacher, the, the person who provides that direct service, whatever their role may be, and the student, I always say is the most important relationship in the building. And we foster that by supporting them as much as we can. But never lose sight of how important that is because it's important. They do a great job. A couple of things just to put on your, a pin in your calendar. We have our, uh, spelling bee always held by the Deerhill, uh, crew and the Cohasset Educational Foundation. I do tend to remember one of our school committee me, uh, members dressing up like a bee.
Yeah.
I'll give you a guess on who that might have been. I, I think I do. I did not put it in this.
Broken.
I have a feeling maybe that I put back in one of the future presentations.
It's broken.
No, I don't, I, well, I have the pictures. The pictures are broken.
Just put it in for this here. I signed these just.
Anyway, great, great, um, opportunity for our students. They work in teams, takes a little pressure off of them. But it's still, it still is a wonderful event. Um, and then we have our High Five Friday for our first responders this coming Friday. And I'll send a message to the community tomorrow, just telling them of that. But we're always, um, so honored to thank our, our first responders. And, you know, the kids love it. So thank you first responders for doing the high. I think they get something out of it too. And our kids certainly get a lot out of it. So nice event. And we're, we weren't able to do it in the fall, but we're gonna make sure we get it done this week. So that's it. That's it for, for updates. Uh, a lot happening, a lot of positive, uh, run up to the graduation. And we're, we're very excited to celebrate Class Two Thousand Twenty Four in the next, uh, next month, plus another month.
Pictures are out in the comments.
They are. Great, great.
Credit to them.
I wasn't involved in it this year.
Yeah, but you shot it.
Without my, uh, crew, but I, I, but I, uh.
Something that happened.
I was sure I didn't go up without me.
That makes it as a tradition.
It's a good sign that I wasn't in contact. It just happened.
A good sign, no pun intended.
Yes.
Good signs.
And it, it was nice to go with my dad and check out these girls over there.
It's, it's, it's wonderful. I think it's.
This is great.
Looks great on the comment and thank you to the town for allowing that to happen. So it's great.
It's good to hear that the red carpet is.
The red. Yeah, I didn't even talk a bit about that, but, uh, uh, the church down, right downtown there is, uh, take, is allowing us to use it. So we won't feel much different at all. Um, and, uh, pleased to offer that again.
All right. Well, thank you, uh, Dr. Sullivan. School updates. I, I, it is one of my favorites.
Sorry. The damage is done.
So now we're gonna move on to, uh, to teaching and learning. And, and tonight we have a, a special presentation on, uh, elementary literacy. Uh, we had talked about this over the course of the, the course of the year. And I know there's been a, um, I've been, I've personally received a lot of public comments, well, not public comments, questions and comments from the public uh, on our, on our literacy. So, um, hopefully, uh, this will, um, answer questions people may have, they haven't brought, and then give an opportunity for questions at the end. Um, and with that, without any further ado, I'll turn it over to Dr. Leslie Scollins, our, um, here for teaching and learning.
Good. Thank you so much, uh, Chairman Carr. We're excited to do this. Uh, we know that there's a lot of information out there. Um, and parents want what's best for their children, just like we want what's best for their children. Um, and there's this lot of information out there, right? There's, um, social media, there's podcasts, there's articles and newspapers and magazines. There's research from universities and colleges and, um, and, and it's talked about a lot. So we're really happy to be able to do this. We were, um, thankful that you asked us to do it. We're thankful that, um, we had some questions come a little bit ahead of time for us. So we have, uh, a sense of maybe what people are looking for and hopefully we will answer those questions in our presentation. I have to, um, thank Brock Roberts for all his work on this.
Brock is here.
He's right here. Our Director of Data, Crickman Evaluation, he did, um, he really, um, did so much to help pull this together. And we also have Barbara Solanka, our Director of Student Services. She's also instrumental in this, through all our work that we're doing, but also in this presentation. So, um, we will go through, hopefully, answer your, answer those questions that you have. Um, and it would be great. We'll just finish up and take all sorts of questions at the end, if that's all right with you. Through it. And, um, and so we will begin. Um, and so we're gonna begin with talking about the teaching and learning beliefs and what guides our practice and why we did what we did for our literacy at the elementary level. Um, and so, quote, any of you who've seen this before, tell me and I forget, teach me and I remember, involve me and I learn. And that's such an important quote for us because it really kind of does explain why we do what we do and the importance of having students do those opportunities to learn. And that's tied to our project-based learning and so many of the things that we do, so much of the curriculum that we have brought in, whether it's science, social studies, mathematics over the past few years. And just a quick review of our district core values because that derives the reasons why we have chosen the literacy approaches and programs that we have. Placing students first, that continuous growth that we want to see for our students and their own achievement. Creating, um, an environment of teaching and learning that is often for our students. Uh, creating strong school and community engagement. And then utilizing the resources to support the teaching, learning and, because it's so important. Those are all part, um, of our strategic plan and our core values. And then on top of that, the vision of a graduate, where do we want to see our students in the end when they leave us? What do we want them to walk away with? Um, and you can see that we want them to strive to act with integrity. We want them to live purposefully, um, recognizing that there is no one path to success because we know all our students learn differently and have different needs. And success for one student would be very different than for another student. Um, that they see continuous, uh, understanding by employing a self-disciplined, open-minded, patient and resilient approach to learning. One of the things that we want our students to walk away with is really all of those pieces of resilience. Um, and be able to have productive struggles, able to work through their problems, to, um, have someone guiding them on the side. But at the same time, digging in when they need to because it's such an important skill for our students to have because life can be bumpy. And we want them to be able to have the skills to be able to get through those pieces. Um, and then, um, that connection to literacy instruction, right? Promoting those lifelong readers and learners, focusing on the individual needs of each student. Implementing responsive teaching practices, that's so important for us. Because, uh, one lever that is most important in child education is the proficiency of the teacher. The second lever is the leadership. So those are the two strongest pieces that will, um, will grow students and, and create achievement. And so, um, so that's really important that we have responsive teaching practices. And we do that through personal development and get some of those other pieces. Focusing on the whole student, having flexibility, utilizing evidence-based practices and recognizing and embracing student motivation. So that is a very big piece. So that is a very big piece to, to make sure that our students are motivated.
And so looking at our beliefs and then how they're reflected in the classroom around literacy, especially this slide, looking at Reader's Workshop was specifically around short, explicit, explicit, robust instruction. That's kind of the, the mini lesson piece of Reader's Workshop. And then moving in from there into, you know, there's a gradual release of responsibility. Then we move into the independent practice, which is really designed to be meaningful where kids are accountable for what they're doing in that independent work. So the kids take ownership of their work in that independent time. They're engaged in what they're doing. There's choice in that time. Oftentimes there's choice. That time's used is a very flexible time. But when they do have choice, it's an accountable choice. It's a choice that makes sense in terms of where they are and they're learning at the time. And then there's the real time spent reading and writing real texts. There's outside of the Reader's Workshop time, they have explicit instruction in phonics and at the lower grades phonemic awareness. That is a more teacher-directed time. This is very much a student-centered time. And I think that really connects to some of those values we were talking about in terms of putting students first. In this time is also a key aspect of the curriculum that we have is the student talk. And this is, I think, some of what we see when these kids are up here tonight is they have the ability to converse and make those connections and to build and to kind of create their own models. And then in this time is also multiple modes of instruction. You see small group instruction for kids who need it. We see individual conferring with teachers. You can even see a teacher catching up a kid in a certain aspect. Kids reading it at different levels and reading what they choose to read. So what does literacy instruction look like? What are the components? The components of, just to make sure I'm following one because I'm counting slides on this. Hey, okay, I'm good. So they're all different components for literacy instruction. We're talking phonics, we're talking comprehension. All these different pieces are involved in literacy instruction. And what we do in Cohasset is we've looked at different components for different parts of literacy instruction. So for the reading piece, the workshop piece, for reading, we've used units of study, which has received some bad press. And I think people are right to ask some questions about that. A lot of that bad press really revolved around the fact that it didn't contain systematic phonics instruction. And because of that, in Cohasset, I think actually before you even adopted units of study, you had the program Reading Street, which also had a, having come from a different district, they also use Reading Street, had a fairly inadequate systematic phonics component. And so in order to make up for that, you brought in what was at the time, I think, still highly regarded systematic phonics program in foundations. A lot of the science of reading at the time, talking 2018, 2019, we're really talking about this lack of instruction around phonemic awareness. And so what we did, because the program, units of study, does not contain explicit instruction around phonemic awareness, we brought in Haggerty as that component to take that piece. There are multiple learning theories that are going into this work. Reading is so complicated in how we acquire our reading skills. There's so much going on in terms of neuroscience, cognitive theory, constructivist theory. And one of the things that I think oftentimes gets missed, gets missed in this process is motivation theory, which we're going to get into a little bit. Science of reading is, is a concept that's been thrown, it's, let me just put it this way. There, there is a science of reading and there's the science of reading. There's been kind of a movement that's driven by podcasts, by, I think, media, by a lot of publishing companies, where they've called something the science of reading. Do you do the science of reading? And they're talking about explicit books and programs that have been gone through a process, whether that was reports or things like that. But it's been labeled, it's part of the science of reading. When we're thinking of science of reading, it, it's so broad. It contains a lot of research, a lot of sciences from different fields. So when we're talking about science of reading, we do the science of reading in the sense of everything that we use is evidence-based. There is science behind the choices we make in Cohasset with all our different components. Is it a science of reading program that you would hear on some of the podcasts and things like that? No, they wouldn't, they would not consider it a science of reading program because of the units of study. And we'll get into that down in our Q and A.
Right, but we have those components added because we have structured literacy, where we're doing phonics, where we have phonemic awareness. And those are the structured, those are the structured literacy pieces that people are talking about when they talk about science of reading.
And that's a comprehensive.
Right, and that's why we have a comprehensive approach because we are doing all of it. So we're doing science of reading and in addition to making sure that our kids have strong comprehension and a strong motivation so that they become lifelong readers.
And that comprehensive piece is, is really looking at a lot of the latest research around how kids read and some of the best practices from before and kind of combining both of those. So when you get into the components of literacy, these are the big five that we're talking about. And we cover all of these in our reading program. So this is, I think, I would say this is the iconic image of the science of reading movement, but all the, all the latest research has come out in the last, I'd say, about 10 years. So on the far left, you have what's been around for a while, the simple view of reading. And then that kind of develops into the Scarborough's reading rope, which breaks down each of those pieces a little bit more. Now you have to go through all these pieces to get to the reading comprehension. So you can see within that, there's all kinds of different things that kids have to go through. And part of the, part of the conversation was do kids, and this is part of the, kind of the debate around how you learn to read is do kids learn through a whole language way, which was kind of popular back in. Yeah, 90s for, for a hot minute. And, or do you learn it through phonics instruction? Or is there sort of a balance? But this represents kind of the code. And all our students in Cohasset learned the code. So this is a slide that was put together. This kind of shows you have those components that we just looked at. And then you look at what's happening in the classroom in terms of around all those components when you're dealing with reading. And I just really wanted to show how complicated this whole piece is because it's, there's no easy way, there's no one way, and there's no one right way. It works different for different students depending on their neurodiversity, how they learn. All these things come into play. And there's just not one right answer. You've got to look at each individual student and then adjust your instruction accordingly, which is a, which is a big undertaking. So this is just a, this is a quotation from someone who's very involved in research on reading. And although science reading is highly relevant to learning in the classroom setting, it does not yet speak to what to teach, when, how and for whom at a level that is useful for teachers. So what's being talked about a lot in terms of literacy today is the translation between how we've learned that the brain works when kids are reading. And then how does that look? What does that look like in the classroom when you have other factors like student motivation, social, emotional concerns? Whether kids are getting along with other kids, all these different things that come into play. And a lot gets lost in the translation. The best practices in terms of teaching are still, really, there's not a lot of research and data on what is best practice. These studies, we're hoping, are going to be coming out relatively soon, especially now that a lot of people have adopted new programs and things of that nature that are really focused on certain aspects of this. We're kind of waiting to see what the results of that are. So this is Nell Duke from the University of Michigan. I believe she created this and she's been credited with this. This is the active view of reading. And what this diagram does is takes a lot of those components from Scarborough's rope and the symbol view of reading. And on the left, it puts in this notion of active self-regulation. So this is kind of what the kids come in, the motivational pieces and the engagement pieces. So those have to be in play for the kids to actually learn, which gets them to the reading. This will come back later in the presentation.
So one of the things that we really have to focus on is being sure that we are meeting the needs of all of our students in our reading approach. And the areas that, that I really focus on in this, our students' access to it, the benefits of it, and then what does specialized instruction mean? So in looking at the reading that is currently going on in our classrooms and looking at our students, particularly our students on IEPs, what our teachers are seeing in order to help those students access that model is, or those models, being able to support them for, through previewing and reviewing so that they can fully participate in that classroom experience, being able to utilize that small group structured instruction with them so that it is very meaningful and they can learn from it. And then giving them the support with the assessments, particularly is where they're seeing they are really supporting those students to access that through the grade level reading and writing assessments in particular are where our students who are on IEPs are getting the supports to be able to fully access in the classroom. They are seeing great benefits in what we are doing right now in reading in a comparative way. So what the special education teachers are saying is that they are seeing the students accessing grade level texts in the read alouds and the whole group portions, which is really important that they get that experience right there at the grade level. That they are also able to access their own books at both independent and instructional levels, which is also really important for them and for all of the students in the classroom because then everybody is able to really participate in a similar way, but very individualized to them. We are seeing students really building that reading stamina now in ways that perhaps we, we were not seeing it before. The collaboration with peers is huge. And, and that just does so much for kids' learning. And the other thing that is really important, particularly for the students on IEPs, is what the special education teachers are seeing is increased engagement for kids, more improvements for kids, and that their self-esteem, particularly around reading, is growing beyond what they have seen before. And then when we have this whole approach to reading, what does it look like when kids are struggling? So obviously specialized instruction is the name of the game in special education. And it is highly dependent on students' individual IEPs. We can't say, oh, in special education classrooms, here's what students are getting because we look at each student individually and each student's IEP is individualized to them. But if we were to get an overview and say to our special education teachers, what areas are you spending specialized instruction in to make sure that students are having all that access and benefit that I talked about in the previous two slides? What they would say to you is they are working on phonics-based reading and writing in specialized instruction with students back in their own classrooms in smaller groups and in individual settings. That they are working on reading comprehension, that they are working on decoding and sight words, and that they are working on fluency and that those are the overall arching areas. Now, obviously, there are individual and different things happening depending on the students. But that is what they are seeing in their specialized instruction, really focusing on students so that they can get, as I said, that access and benefit when they're in the general classroom. And really, really important for all of our students, but particularly for our students on IEPs, that there is no such thing as a magic bullet program. That there isn't a program that is going to meet the needs of all students or that is going to do everything, which is why we do things the way we do in current Cohasset. That nothing all by itself is going to fully meet the literacy needs of every single student. But many programs have components that when you build them together and you match them with student needs, that combination and that implementation in a very real and applied way is going to be what results in reading growth. And that is what we are seeing.
Exactly, and that's why our SOA, which we presented a couple of weeks ago, is directly tied into this also. What else is out there? What can we do for our students that are on IEPs or on 504s that are making the effective progress that we want? What other resources are there? The more resources we have, the more opportunity to address those specific students.
So now we move into kind of the why we do what we do. When I started working in kind of literacy K-12, I guess, back in 2016, the one thing that was a major concern for me was when I walked through classrooms, they were led by teachers all of the time. And coming from kind of this belief in student-centered growing students, that was a big movement for me in terms of we need to change, we need to have students active in the classroom and engaged in what they're doing. You know, and, and not, and you'd see, you know, behavioral issues and things that came with students kind of getting bored or not being engaged. So that student-centered style classroom is a big part of what we believe in in Cohasset. And this is just a quote regarding some research around child-centered style classrooms. So child-centered style classrooms showed a faster development in higher order reading skills as compared to their counterparts in teacher-directed style classrooms and showed no differences in basic reading skills, i.e. word recognition. The mixed teaching style proved to be more beneficial than teacher-directed style for children's development. So, and that's exactly what we're doing. It's a mix. It's not all student-driven all the time. We have direct instruction moments and they tend to be smaller in duration.
And that's what we're helping the teachers do now, how to do it.
Correct.
In, in our embedded professional program.
Yeah, and, and, and again, and it gets into the differentiated instruction. And again, we're getting into reading comprehension, which is very complicated. So this diagram kind of gives you a sense of the layered, all the different layers going on in terms of getting to that reading comprehension. So you can see that there are so many different aspects about it to get to actual teaching and comprehension part. And then again, this comes back to the active view, that we have to have some sort of student motivation engagement, kind of, some level of choice in some, in some voice. And we start that young and we grow that through the years and it becomes part of the culture of the classroom.
It does, because reading can be really challenging. If there isn't that motivational piece behind it, then it's that much harder for students, right? We all like to read what we like to read. And so we're teaching our teachers how to take that child's interest, find books that are at their instructional independent level and then teach them within those books. And that's really important. And, and then, and then we hit all those pieces in the middle, which are all the pieces that go into teaching reading.
And this is just a, a piece around motivational theory. Studies finding that students are motivated to read more often, have better reading comprehension abilities. Reading instruction should not only focus on skills instruction, but also the promotion of reading motivation. And that's a lot of that choice piece, that's that student-centered part, that's that independent period in a workshop environment.
Thanks, just allow me here for a second because I want to, I'm going to have to stop showing for a minute. I want to show a video. This came from Meg Stillman, kindergarten teacher at Osgood. I want to show a video. This came from Meg Stillman, kindergarten teacher at Osgood. When I do it, that's what I'm.
Okay.
Okay.
And I think what we're hearing from a lot of teachers is that the reading stamina of our young students just keeps growing. And that they're, and that they're, it's not fake reading.
It's very intentional.
Entroll.
Just make sure one thing's turned off.
They'd be here in a V room now.
That was that motivational part.
You haven't seen these? These are new technical difficulties.
I've never seen that. Oh, do the, what did you just do? It's good.
I just clicked on X. I don't know.
Can you click on the big, big side square there?
I don't know what these are. All right, now I'm just clicking. Now I'm just going through the whole presentation.
Okay, no, that's good. It's, yeah, close enough.
This is the redacted version of the presentation. I'm kidding, it's not redacted, everyone, just, just.
And so, you know, there's a large and growing body of research that really talks about readers, and that skilled readers are highly active, they're strategic, they're engaged, they deploy executive skills to manage the reading process. And I think when we think about reading or thinking about, you know, how students learn, here's an analogy with soccer, so you can't see that, but, you know, kids have isolated practice, right? They, they practice how to kick with their right, they practice how to kick with their left, just like we teach kids how to decode. Okay, I want you to find those initial sounds. They practice it in isolation, because then we help them put it all together, right? The more they learn, all those decoding pieces allow them to be fluent readers. And that could be a little different for all students, but, and I apologize, I'm not sure what this is about. But that takes us right to that, that active self-regulation, right? Knowing when and how to use those skills within the context of the real game, right? So when you learn, and, you know, and the coaches on the side, just like we do with our students, you're learning those basic decoding skills, you're learning around sound and letter relationships, how that all comes together. And then we give you those skills, you practice them, then you can pull them all together, and you keep adding more and more skills to your repertoire until you're really a proficient reader. And so it's a kind of a nice analogy to be thinking that way. And sometimes, some kids are really good at kicking right, and they can't kick on the left, and that's same for reading. Some kids are really good at particular pieces, but there are some things that are eluding them. And it's our job to figure out what it is and how we're going to make sure that they're getting what they need. And that's why we have the assessments we have, and that we can dig in and look at some of those particular issues. It's not that the child just can't read. What is it about reading that's making it a challenge for the child? And so just as readers, they need both skills and applications, just like in soccer and just like in. So, I want to make sure our numbers, I'm going to make sure I'm right. And so one of the things, though, that we really want to invest in, because we believe in our teachers, and that's something that I've talked about since my time here, the importance of professional development. And we brought in a group that does embedded professional development, which is different than going to a workshop, being in an auditorium. These coaches are on the ground, working with our teachers in the classroom, modeling, having teachers practice the skill that they're being taught, just like our kids, just like anyone when you're learning a new skill, you need to practice it, and then you can pull it all together. And so that is what we really focused a lot of our time on, because that's, like I said earlier, the biggest lever in student achievement and growth, is good teaching. And that's leadership, good leadership. So we want to see, what, what we want is to see the child in pursuit of knowledge and not knowledge in pursuit of the child. And so this is just a quick overview of what's been happening. I think there were some questions around the foundations training. Foundations was here before I even started. I think it was 2017, if I'm not mistaken. And there was training then. When we were looking at our literacy and we worked with our instructional leadership team, we also talked about some of the things that needed to happen for teachers. So foundations was, there was training when it first came out. We did additional training for everyone again, and it was based on where they were. So some teachers had been doing it, they got a different training than teachers who hadn't done it before. They had a more intensive training. And then our fourth and fifth grade teachers also got foundations training, which is a bit unusual. Phonics training and phonics is usually K through three. However, we were coming out of the pandemic, and our teachers were also concerned, our fourth and fifth grade teachers, were concerned that kids were going to come to them with some, with missing some of the foundational phonics skills that they thought that they might need. So we did training for our fourth and fifth grade teachers also. In addition, we did work around multi-syllabic words, and I have to give reading specialist Sarah McDonald a lot of credit for this. She created some modules for teachers to use, and you actually saw it at Wilco during, during the pandemic, where she was really focused on making sure the kids got those foundational skills. Again, that science of reading that you hear of, or those structured literacy, it's paramount. You can't teach without it. So kids can't really learn without it. You need to have it. And again, that embedded professional development, and then we got some professional development for our reading specialists and coaching, helping teachers work through that. And then the following year, we also realized that foundations, great for phonics, phonemic awareness, wasn't being addressed the way we thought it could. So we brought integrity, which is K through two, dominantly K through one, we do use it through two. We've actually been meaning back, because now we find that our students aren't meaning it other than just for intervention purposes in grade two. And then we continued our work in 22, 23. And the ILT, we worked together to make that decision in 21, 22, to do Reader's Workshop. When looking at Reader's Workshop, and it met all the core value pieces and child-centeredness that we wanted, we chose, we chose that, like, that's an approach, it's not a program, it's an approach. But the companion to that was units of study. There was lots of discussion about it, because at that time, there was a lot of press. And the K through two, which was the, which was obviously under more scrutiny because of the phonics and the three, the three Q-ing, so we talked long and hard about it, and we got to see some of those pieces in what it was going to look like, the revised versions. And we thought that they were going to be very strong, knowing we weren't even going to use the phonics. We didn't, we used reading street, we'd already had an established program in foundations. We didn't want to change that, successful. And then.
So you thought we were already addressing phonics sufficient?
We were, and because we also brought that additional training in.
That's the comprehensive block. We didn't, we didn't use unit study for that. We had phonics in another, in another way.
No. I don't want to interrupt, but I want to make sure everybody can follow.
Yeah.
Can you briefly just tell us, what Reader's Workshop is, what Unit Study is, what Foundations is, what Haggerty is? These are some of the, some of the building blocks that I know I'm going to need to continue following on.
So Foundations is phonics. That's the decoding. That's letters, letter and sound, how they come together, and that's K through three. When Rock referenced the fact that the 90, they kind of got, they got, they got away from it with whole language, and then they said, oh, no, you need to bring it back. So phonics is the core to learning how to break the code. Sometimes I hear you say peek the code.
And the program we used to teach is called Foundations. It's an instructional program.
It is. Foundations is Wilson, and you may have heard from Wilson Reading. Wilson also has a multi-sensory reading approach that we use for our, and our students, teachers of special education have that training, and we're offering it to all special education teachers that want it. And we also have specific teachers that teach it.
Can you give an example of the way I think this goes to my question? The way that Foundations goes about teaching phonics, like, so people understand how it works?
So it's systematic, right? They learn the sound, they learn how, what it looks like, what it sounds like, and then how do you put those sounds together, how do you create blends? So it's very systematic. It's not, you can't, this is a totally turn the page. You have to follow the sequence in order to teach it, and that follows along with the Wilson.
And that is right in the scope of what the science of reading is advocating for.
Very specific. And again, we did that additional training in it because we had students that were coming out of COVID, and we weren't really sure what it had, you know, what they had been exposed to.
Just to keep going.
And then the next part of it was phonemic awareness, which is another part of breaking the code. You know, feel free, everybody to drop in. We felt like Foundations didn't give that additional part, because if the kids don't have that awareness, then it really is hard for them to also break the code.
And how does phonemic awareness differentiate from phonics?
So I don't know if you want to jump in a little bit, Rock, but.
It's, I believe, the sounds.
Yeah.
And how the sounds are constructed, because you've got to get that piece to actually start.
So rhyming, phonemic awareness, so the rhyming sounds and all of those pieces, that comes into, into play there.
So phonics is knowing that the letters represent a sound. Phonemic awareness is recognizing the sound and how it relates.
Right.
Got it.
So that.
Being able to manipulate sounds, so taking an initial sound and replacing it with another initial sound, or identifying terminal sound and word.
And Haggerty, and how does Haggerty go about it?
So that is also systematic, and it's a quick hit. It's about 10, 15 minutes a day, and it's very engaging. Kids love it. It's, it's got a rhythm to it, it has a structure to it, so the kids understand what it is. Teachers really like it, and it feels, and it's very comfortable for them, because the buy-in is quick, really quick with the kids. And the teacher saw immediate results from that. Yeah. So I think that was a really, that was a really good, that was a really good call. And a lot, the reading specialists were talking about that one.
And another, yeah. And one of the powers of that, too, is it, it's really good, because it's used predominantly K1, and if kids are struggling with that, it's usually a good, it's a, it's a flag to say, this student might need help, and the sooner you can get help to a kid who's struggling with reading.
You're saying Haggerty.
Haggerty, that the whole phonemic awareness is, is critical, because if they can't get the sound piece, the letter, it breaks down.
And then he meant Reader's Workshop, Reader's Workshop, and Brock did describe that, but I don't think you're referencing it.
Yeah, so Reader's Workshop is an instructional model. It's based around student-centered learning, and it's, the structure is, it starts with a, about a 10-minute explicit instruction mini lesson from the teacher. All right, so this is the, the learning target of the day. This is what we're going to focus on. In that mini lesson, a gradual release of responsibility, I do, we do, and then they break off into their independent work time, where they're doing, or they're working on that target. And then they usually come back. Sometimes there's a mid-session kind of teacher check-in, and then we go into oftentimes a share at the end, where you'll pick a couple of students who've done certain things and demonstrate kind of how we've met the learning target. Now, that independent time is flexible in the sense that teachers also use that to pull small groups, so they know based on their formative assessments that Cindy, Tom, and Charlie are having a hard time with this. I'm going to keep them on the carpet while the kids go out and do their independent work, and I'm going to have a session with these kids and make sure they get it. Or Nicole, who was absent yesterday, didn't get the lesson leading up, will be in. So it's, it's that going on at that time. It's also can be, it's a great time for other support staff to come into the room, because then they can target certain kids. So it's, it's really becomes a collaborative effort in the workshop environment. And this really came out of Writer's Workshop way back in the 1970s in terms of collaborating, collaborating on writing in, in college, and then they brought it back and found that this is really effective, all the way back.
One of the great pieces of that, though, is that, as Rock mentioned, you see different teaching styles there. So you see whole group instruction, you see small group instruction, you see individual work, you see rotation of supportive work, you see students accessing texts that they, that are just right for them. And all of that helps us in every subject. And this, the PD that we're getting, is really high-quality and embedded. So we have our, our consultants are right alongside them. So it's providing a lot for our staff in more ways than just helping the reader.
Is the PD included in the Reader's Workshop?
That's it.
That's all part of it, right? So they had PD in, right, in all of that. And I think when we're looking at the Reader's Workshop, there's a, well, all of our literature, it's about a 90-minute block, give or take, throughout the day in, in the literacy part. And so I think it's important just to remember how it's, I guess, when I'm thinking about the professional development that they get, they also get, how do you set this up? Because people think about kids with independent books, and they're like, what are they doing? Are they fooling around in the corner? It's very structured, but it gives students choice and voice around what they're going to read. But it takes a long time to get kids to understand exactly how this works. It doesn't happen overnight. They have to put in the routines, they have to put in the expectations. The teachers are constantly checking in to make sure that the kids aren't, sometimes you'll hear the term fake reading, and making sure that that's not happening.
And there's also an individual conferencing piece.
And that's another place where those expectations are set. And within a book, the student, the teacher and student will be reading together. The teacher and the student are setting goals for that student around what I'd like you to do next. I see that you, you know, accomplished X, Y, and Z. You know what I'd like you to work on? I want you to work on, you know, I want you to go back in, and I want you to look for some of those key factors that you think made this character do X, Y, and Z.
So it's a teaching structure.
Yeah.
That helps work alongside the program.
Exactly.
And so, so I'm doing the whole SAT thing. So Foundations is to phonics. Haggerty is to phonemic awareness. Reading Workshop is to?
Is the comprehension.
Comprehension. Okay. Perfect. And then I will go to the.
I will add that there's crossover.
They're all interconnected.
And this is what we're saying, we say comprehensive.
And then the units of study is the resource we're using within Reader's Workshop. That's where there's confusion, because people think Reader's Workshop, but units of study are the same thing. They're not, but they do dovetail really nicely together.
So what is units of study?
So units of study is the resource that we have for teachers that they use, that guides them through their practice with the students. It's not a textbook or a manual that you would typically see for a basal or a packaged program. It is a guide for the teachers, and it gives them literature that they're using, the skills that they're addressing. So it's all right there. It's just set up in a little bit of a different manner than an actual basal or an anthology, where you turn the page and, okay, now read this to the kids. So it's a little bit different. And that's why you have to have professional development. And this, the teaching staff we have is strong and can do this work. This is not an easy lift for a teacher. It's much easier to take an anthology, hand it to them, and say, just turn the page. We're not asking them to do that. We're asking, and, and not that if you had that program, you wouldn't be responsive to your teachers. I'm not saying that. What I'm saying, we wanted to make sure that we had training and programming that is making our teachers responsive to the individual needs of each student.
And that's what's key. And that's what's key. The flexibility in this allows us to tailor our instruction to meet the needs of individual students. And just so anybody, you know, everyone's clear, it's, for us, it's science of reading, yes. And we're also approaching it in this way to, to improve the teaching through Reader's Workshop. And we feel the units of study, but what we're using it for is effective. But we're not, we're, we're not trying to neglect what the science of reading is saying in, in, uh, in, in our phonics and our phonemic awareness. In fact, we've, we've chosen methodology that is very much in line with the science of reading to do that aspect. So I think people, sometimes when they hear, you know, it's a study of Reader's Workshop, they look at blinders and don't think we're doing other things, and that's not our approach.
That's what I mean, that's really helped. I started, like, kinda losing the thread a little bit as we started going through programs.
It's, it's, there's so much.
Yes.
We, we had, we had eighty-five slides. We don't have eighty-five slides.
Oh, yeah.
But my point was that we, we, no, but my point is that there was so much to tell you, and how do you make it simple? And thank you for asking those questions, because I think it helped. But anyway, we continued our work. Um, and, um, this year, the K two, um, implemented the new program, which the teachers and the students and the reading specialists absolutely love. It is so inclusive. Um, the kids can't wait to get their hands on the decodable readers. Um, they're, they, they're super happy with it, um, and I think the inclusivity and the cultural responsiveness of the, of the resources, um, is, is really spectacular. Um, and so, so slow this, you know what it is? I'm going by this, but this is slower. Um, and so.
I'll size one thing in the previous slide, and about PD, you don't have to go back to it, it's fine. We're just that idea that we have PD for all of our teachers in reading, but we also have PD for our reading specialists in reading to really bring that all together. And PD for our special education teachers to support the students in the Reader's Workshop, and to really dovetail everything all in together, and that is really important. And that is the key to making sure that, like, everybody really is.
That's a really good point, Barbara. One of the things that we noticed, and special education teachers brought this, as well as agenda teachers, there are kind of a disconnect between the special education teacher and the, the agenda teacher in the collaboration piece. How do we make this happen? We brought this to, um, the consultants, and they said, okay, they brought in, um, this year, they brought in a, a teach, a coach who is, um, is specialized in special education. So she's taught Reader's Workshop, she's a special education teacher within that. And then helped develop, um, a format and a system for our teachers to then collaborate together so that each child on NIP, this document and this collaboration process, allows that child's goals to be there. It allows the teacher and the special education teacher to look at those goals, what is happening in the classroom, what are the things that are going on, and then how do we modify, how do we specialize this instruction? So that child can access everything else that everybody else is at their level, and at the same time meet their goals. So, um, that, that, um, and I think that speaks to our approach to all of this. We are constantly going to look at, is it working? If it's not working, why isn't it working? And if the why is, it's not good for us now, then we're gonna do something else. Um, but we're not gonna jump ship right away. Um, but we are gonna constantly look at the data to make sure that we're doing the best that we can for our students.
So, Dr. Salz, in, in, I did make it a little time, but I do want to be sensitive to time. And I know there's a lot here, and this is really important, but what I, what I ask is, if there's maybe, maybe three to five more key points that you wanna, wanna go, because also, you know, I'm sure there's gonna be questions in the committee and questions from, uh, from the part of.
And, and this is quick. I mean, obviously, um, the differentiating instruction of small group reading, talked about that, not one side, but all. Um, and so just some quick data, so we'll do quick, because there is a lot.
Yeah, quick data, just, this is just, um, our literacy growth from this year in terms of our I-ready scores. Uh, this is the, represents the fall into the winter, uh, and just shows really that kids are improving significantly throughout the year, uh, and, and kids who are struggling in those numbers keep getting reduced. Uh, we don't have our, uh, spring numbers yet, but the expectation is that keeps moving in that direction. And then this is just, this is just looking at the top performing, um, districts. The top of this is cut off, but this is third grade, um, top performing districts in terms of EL, ELA scores on MCAS. Uh, and I have the district, but as you know, every district, most districts have multiple elementary schools. Um, but I didn't wanna get the slide so crazy, so I just, I just put the district in. Um, and to show what the curriculum they were using in two thousand twenty-three. And so you could see in, in third grade, uh, the top ten, a lot more than ten, I think it's about nineteen schools here scoring. But, uh, about fourteen or fifteen out of the nineteen are using comprehensive literacy, which is what we're using.
And the same for fourth and the same for fifth.
It follows through. This is, the next one's fourth grade.
Yeah.
And, you know, some of the district names have changed, but still the predominance of this approach is, um, is what's, what we're seeing in the top performing schools. And I think this is not the best approach for every district. I will say that. If you're not gonna support the teachers, you're not gonna have the professional development, and you're not gonna have people who know what they're talking about in terms of literacy and the different components, then you go, you go with a packaged program, because you'll take everybody and you'll raise them here. The idea of this is, is taking them here and taking them here. Um, so.
And it allows us to, it allows us to address all students, not just students who are having difficulty reading, those students who need to be challenged, who have a higher reading level. It allows us to take them to places, um, that they need to go versus ever trying to, like, hit the middle. We don't wanna hit the middle. We wanna hit everybody and allow everybody to grow, and everybody to move along at their pace. And so these are just, this is really kind of.
Yeah, we kinda covered this.
But we just talked about this. These are all the components of why, um, we chose the units of study and the workshop model. And then just that, this piece of, you know, I can do this, like, this is what this is about, teaching, really, helping our kids, being responsive to their needs, not letting them flounder, trying to, you know, productive struggles, okay, but not letting them lose self-esteem. The SEL components of this are massive. And then this, we'll end with this slide, and this is just, um, some pictures and just some quotes from our teachers and our younger students around what they, what they like about Reader's Workshop. Great. So, so, um, also in this, just so you know, there are multiple pages of research, and so have at it. You can, you can look at all the references again. I'm gonna thank, um, uh, Rock for doing this, but there's lots of stuff, and there's links, so.
We'll put this in the newsletter.
It'll be in the newsletter. It'll be on the website, too.
We should make this available. This, this is, this is great.
We will.
So thank you for, um, for putting this together. This is, this was tremendous. You know, the, the, the ask was from my end to understand the thinking going behind this and help kind of, uh, me pull the building blocks. We will say, oh, units of study is terrible. Why are we using Reader's Workshop? And I'm like, Reader's what? So this is, um, this is, this is, uh, really helpful for me to understand. And, and for my community perspective to, you know, our job is to not necessarily question your decisions, but to make sure that there's a process, and you clearly, to me, established that you, that you have a process. Uh, but as you started off with, everyone's, um, everyone's, everyone has their, there's a lot of information out there, and everybody wants the best for their kids, and so it's right for people to ask questions, so.
It's a good thing. And Shima, we do have one question.
Before I opened up the committee, I did wanna see if there's any questions from the, uh, I wanna see the audience, but that's not right, public.
But we have Megan Berry, eleven, Tad Lane. Do elementary school teachers still use, utilize Lucy Coughin's cueing strategy to teach reading? No. That's a simple answer. No, should remove that, but, um, anyway, no, so.
So just so, not everyone.
Knows what that is.
Who Lucy Coughin is.
So she is, um, she is part of, yes, she is Teachers College, and, um, and they are the creators of units of study from way back when. And so, um, so that's why her name is put along with this.
And what's, in the three cueing system was around, uh, it was, it pushed kids, if they didn't understand the word, to guess based on, um.
Cues.
Yeah, context cues and things like that.
And so they moved away from that system and, and went back to using your knowledge.
Well, from a, a simple point of view, if you saw a pond, and you're just trying to spell out the word pond, and the kid looks, says, oh, pond, because it remembers the word. And that's, of course, what the science of reading is saying, isn't an effective model of really learning a word. So the question is, do we use the cueing system that we just described? And the answer is no.
Okay.
Perfect. That's a great question.
Any other questions from?
That's all.
So I'll hold questions. I'll, maybe go type them in, so I will, I will come back. But, uh, in the interim, I'll open up the, the committee, uh, as I want to do. Mr. Keeney, would you, uh?
Thank you. Thank you for putting this on the agenda. I think this is great. I mean, it just tells you where we're at in town. Um, you know, you really put it in layman's terms. Like, it's kind of the same thing with math, right? You're gonna have to get a new year, um, pluses and minuses before you can advance to get that foundation. That's what I'm hearing. Yeah. I can also say that, um, I really appreciate that bringing everybody up, because you don't, you don't wanna have children that are in there to really advance, that they're not being, they're, they're getting bored, and they might lose, they might be really smart, and they just said, hey, I, I've been, I have no possess for this, because it's like, comes easy to me. So to keep them challenged, and I think it just uplifts everyone. And, uh, I just, again, I think the administrators, and thank you, Rock, and thank you, Dr. Salz, because this is the stuff that, you know, makes us cohesive, makes us learn about how to, to educate kids. And I really appreciate, again, to put it in layman's terms, because this is kind of foreign to me, but I'm respectful.
I think one, one of the neat things that was said, we're really trying to pick the best program, I shouldn't say program, it's not a program, the best approach for cohesive, if it's for cohesive. And, you know, this is what we feel works best because of.
And again, we'll keep watching it. We're gonna look at our data, and, and we will move based on what our data tells us to do.
Just keep the needle.
Right, right. And if, again, if we find that it's not the right approach, we're, we're, we're gonna make change.
Thank you, Mr. Keeney. This is asking.
Um, thank you. It's very comprehensive. Um, I actually would love, I love that the, the conversation that sort of briefly already occurred about making this available to others, and think that would be a wonderful presentation to go to a CPAC meeting, maybe in a modified source, so that there can be some conversation and discussion about, um, what, um, how, how the district arrived at the methodologies and approaches that they, that you did. Um, what, so I have a two-part question, and then I have a follow-up question. Um, what do you do about new faculty that come in? I know this year we brought in a lot of new faculty, um, teaching, uh, as, as a, you know, running a classroom at, at children's just right level takes a lot of finesse and a lot of experience, especially in classroom management and setting up routines. It is a higher-level teaching skill. Um, and then you have new faculty who maybe never had their own classroom before, um, certainly have great training and are, are wonderful people. How do you bring them up to speed? Is my first question.
Okay. Don't, yeah.
Yeah, well, we'll start there. Okay, yeah, so good question. And maybe I have three questions.
Right, so that's, right, because that's, because that's, right. So we partnered with, um, TLA because we're in it for the long haul. So, so we've had, um, we've had professional development, and it's actually differentiated for our teachers, too. So, um, it's based on what they, and then we are also training our special education teachers, the special education teachers, also because it has to be sustainable. Eventually, the consultants are gonna leave, right? So their job is to build capacity, and that's one of the reasons why we work so closely to help the reading specialists, so that they become comfortable and they can coach our, our new teachers. And we'll watch as time goes on as to what we need to, like, teach your foundations, then they're gonna get that training. Um, and we, we just have to offer it. So we'll send, either people send them out, or if we haven't had self-consultant, then we need them, if they have those skills. Um, they brought somebody in to do the foundation training, uh, when we asked for that. So, so, yeah, so it's not something that you can just, they're gonna pick up.
Right.
You can't do that. Um, and so we're built, we're building the capacity, we're building the culture, and we're building all the structures in place to be able to sustain.
Um, what about the ESPs? Do they get to join in on this? Because I feel like they're important players in the classroom.
Yeah.
And when you, I'm envisioning.
Yeah.
Four different groups, or five different groups even, around the classroom to have, um, coaches, th- those two adults or three adults in the classroom.
Right.
Um, are coaching children to read at that point, and making sure, how does that work?
Yeah, they probably, they haven't had the same kind of training, but they're under the, they're under, um, the special education teachers. So those teachers give them directly what they need to do. Uh, that is something that we're trying to work on, because I think in general, um, ESPs need, that everybody needs training, and that's a place where we haven't quite found the right model yet. Uh, because to be honest with you, they're, they're helping, you know, they're helping the, the students. Well, we have teachers, and we have substitutes, and coming in to help, um, with the PD's help, um, happening. So that is one thing that we haven't done, um, more with. We did offer some other kind of training, or, or trying.
And we're also very judicious, too, about, you know, where and what kind of supports or ESP is going to be giving to students as opposed to what the special education teachers are going to be giving to students for supports and things like that, while we're getting.
They're given specific and specific.
That's it. Notice that.
It's, right, yeah.
But, no, I was gonna say, but Barbara said it.
Yeah.
So then it seems like, um, I, I love PD, and I think PD is so important and is probably a, a big budget item for us. And so I just have lots of questions about it. Um, so it seems like TLA is doing a lot of coaching around, um, Reader's Workshop or the, the workshop model.
Um, they're actually doing all of it.
Doing all of it. Okay.
So the signs of reading, so they were, so that was the first thing we asked them to do, actually wasn't Reader's Workshop. What we asked them to do was, um, help all of us understand what is the science of reading? What's the, what, how does the brain work? How do they acquire language? How do students acquire reading skills? So that's actually the first part we did. Then we brought in, what's the, what is the approach? And what does our literacy walk look like? We did that with the ILC, kind of broke that up, foundations, out of Hagerty, you know, how, out of that literacy walk. So, and then, yes, they're doing two things. They are doing some work around unpacking the study. Part of it, the other part is really teaching strategies. How do you do small group instruction? How do you, uh, use, um, that one-on-one time of conferencing? How do you, um, do a mini lesson? That's a hard skill, because it's really easy to get up there and teach for thirty minutes. It's really hard to get it in ten to twenty minutes. And that's, you know, just think about it, that's a sweet spot, right, for all of us. Um, but making sure that the lesson is explicit, and it's teaching the direct skill that you want taught. And that, and then what happens after that? And how do you follow up? How do you make sure that students are acquiring the skill?
And how you have this really active classroom that all the way around, it's engaged all of the time. Manage all of that and keep it all going. It's amazing to watch.
And are the classrooms committed to teaching both Hagerty and foundations, um, to the extent to which those curriculums are written? I'm, I'm hesitating to use the word to fidelity, but.
No, but, no, yeah, yeah.
With sort of robust, robustness.
They are, and I think part of it is, um, they're just real good teachers, but they also have seen the benefit of it, so they know it works. I think that Hagerty, to me, I mean, they had foundations already pretty much when we got here, so that was pretty established. And they saw how it was working, and so they're really happy with it. And Hagerty was brought in, that, it was kind of the missing piece for that, for that kind of, you know, that decoding, that understanding of sound relationships, and, and they, they love it, because the kids really love it, and they hold on to it. It's a little clapping. It has all sorts of things to it. It's just gonna set, right? So there it is.
But the use of foundations is really, it grew with this district, because when I arrived here, we were using Italian letters, lively letters.
Mm-hmm.
Um, at the very, very early ages, it was transitioning into foundations. And the depth, uh, of, uh, we were just starting to get people trained in foundations. So, like, we've really moved the needle.
I have a question, sorry. And this one is for Mr. Roberts, I think. I was sort of picking up that you feel as if there's a lot of information out there on reading and the acquisition of reading skills that's, um, not helpful. And so how would you guide parents? Um, because I, I totally digested the entire soul story and thought it was well researched, well-developed. Um, and, and, and probable, you know, parents are doing their own research. They are talking to specialists. And so, you know, when you're, as a parent, trying to educate yourself, and you're getting information that's maybe contrary to things that you're hearing from the professionals that are working with your student, um, it's hard. It's, it's a hard feeling to have, because I think that trust is really important. So how would you guide parents to evaluate the sources that they're being, that, that are, that are available to them? Because I think there are lots of things out there for, I'm, I am a parent of a, of a child with a specific learning disability in reading, and have consumed a lot of information, and am trained in some of the methodologies, like G myself. And so when you're sort of hearing yes, but, and, or, like, what are those sort of guidelines?
So this is tough. This is tough, because it's.
it's hard because the complexity of reading comprehension, it's hard to really dig deep into the research without actually going to the studies. So much of it has been abbreviated so that people can understand, but in the process becomes simplified. And unfortunately, I think what's happened is reignited kind of this reading wars approach to it, that this is bad, this is good. And I think the bad has not really presented your case well in terms of, no, this is still fine. This is fine, we're doing this in. Whereas the, the, you know, they're not doing what they need to do, they're not, you know, this kind of idea that your teachers aren't being taught how to read. I think anything that has a big headline like that that's all encompassing is something that you want to take with a grain of salt. Can I direct you to a place of read these, you know, articles and they'll set the story straight? No, because it's not really straight, it's kind of based on your overall beliefs around education and what the role of the student is in that.
Right, so there is a point of view in all of this.
There's a lot of point of view, right? And it's hard, I would say the dominant voice right now is that you shouldn't be doing this. That you should be looking at these programs. And that's, you know, and those are the programs that are being recommended by the state. This, we're doing comprehensive literacy, we're doing all these different components to satisfy all the evidence-based practices. But if you're looking at where's Cohasset's programs in, you know, DSS's recommendations, it's not there because it's not one program does everything. And it's hard to convince people that it's okay that you're doing all these components when you can do a EL or an inter-reading or something that's all encompassing.
We've chosen à la carte mode.
Right, right.
Which is different from, you know, just.
And that's the structure. And that's why this presentation is so long involved because it's hard to tell our story when there's so many other stories out there telling you that our story is not true or is not going to forget.
They're just not hearing our whole story.
Right.
We do have a question from.
Actually, yes, let's, let's, let's intersperse. Thank you, Mr. Lasky.
This is also from, I mean, this is from Megan Berry, again, 11 Tad Lane. And the question is, what does the Reader's Workshop independent reading session look like for struggling readers if there are not enough teaching resources on a certain day?
It's a really good question.
There's not enough teaching resources, people on the classroom, adults, adults, yeah. So.
Yeah, well, teaching resources.
Yeah.
Teachers and ESPs, classroom teachers and ESPs.
So, so teachers, teachers of the, of the program.
Yes, classroom practitioners.
Okay.
Yeah, just to find, just only reason to ask.
That's, that's how I interpreted, I mean, obviously I'm not.
No, that's great, we're just defining resources so we can answer.
So, well, again, structures are in place, right? And that teacher, the teacher, even one teacher, is probably going to spend a bit more time with students that are struggling versus students that are reading at or above grade level. So it doesn't mean that they're not going to touch those kids throughout the week in small group or in, in their conferencing, but those students actually probably are in a rotation that they're going to work with that teacher more often throughout the week. And then they're also going to give, be given work that is at their grade level and not slightly above their grade level or their reading level, I should say, because then they can access the information and they're given specific tools and tasks during that time. They also have to build up their stamina and read the books that are at their level. So there's kind of the, we mentioned instructional and independent reading. Independent reading is when a child at their grade level and they can read it with very few errors and they can just kind of read it on their own and get through it. An instructional, it's just a little bit about where their reading level is, but they can do it, but it's a little more work. And those instructional usually happen to the teacher. So they're going to make sure the child has in their hand a book, because they have book bins or book bags, however a teacher wants to do it. And most of the books are at their students, that child's reading level. There'll be a couple that might be instructional, but they're very careful with those. And kids are going to go to the book that's easier for them and they're independent reading. But I hope that answers the question, but did that sound about?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, if, and if you think about it too, because of the approach that we use, a couple of things can happen. One is that when we see something that isn't working so well, it's not like the whole program, we have to reevaluate. It's like pieces we might need to shift out and bring in new things and change and it's just a little piece of it. But the other thing is, and it does connect to this, when we see this kind of thing in the classroom, the classrooms are very dynamic. They're very different every day. So what's going on, you know, one day with kids, whether they be kids who are struggling readers or kids who are, you know, need a little bit more push because they need to read at a little bit higher level, they need to challenge or whatever it may be. You know, even within a lesson, those things are going to be changing and evolving and going on within that 90 minutes or whatever it might be. And then the next day it's going to look a little bit different and the next day it's going to look a little bit different because this approach is so comprehensive and so dynamic. So it's not like, oh, reading looks the same every single day and every single day, these kids need help. And some days there are three people there and some days there's only one and somebody's not going to get it because it is very responsive to what's going on in a particular unit, a particular, you know, strategy that's being used in reading that day, a particular approach with particular kids and there's a constant shift around that all of the time.
And teachers are circulating too. So it's not like the teacher's just at the table doing small group and then not looking at other students. And that block of time, it's 90 minutes over the course of the day. The kids aren't by themselves for 90 minutes while the teacher's doing something else, it's not broken up that way. And so there's constant, sorry.
No, I was, I was just going to say, I, I believe that we've also made efforts to bring staff in during that independent work time.
We did, we have, but I said, the question was if we don't. Yeah, the question is if we do have someone. So teachers are taught how to cut, how the classroom management component of that and how to make sure that students are doing work for them. Because we built stamina, they don't just start reading for 20 minutes by themselves, that doesn't happen. Like that, it takes time. So it's a little bit of time, okay, we're going to independent read for four minutes, fantastic, okay, now we're going to come back and do something else.
May I just ask a question based on, it's a various question that I, this is the way I interpreted your question, so I was going to use an example to try and rephrase it. Reader's Workshop, you got the short targeted instruction phase of a lesson. And you break off and you've got the independent work, okay? Where we're talking about that, you know, motivational aspect of, of, of reading that we're trying to instill in kids, right? Like self motivation. If there is a student with literacy-based SLD and, and we have the practitioners in the classroom, right? So maybe Rock kind of answered this question, I don't know if it always happens, right? Excuse me, Mr. Roberts. When they break off into the independent work, what does that look for, look like for the person that, for the most vulnerable learners who may really not be able to, who may be getting frustrated or really just can't self motivate? It's just not, they just don't have that ability right now because they're behind, they're, or just learning differently from their peers? How do we deal with that? Like, what do we do during that time for them?
So they're either working with a teacher in a small group or one-on-one, special education teacher could be in there, reading specialist is in there, ESP is in there. So if all those components happen during that time.
So, so that, for, for those students? So, so there isn't, so there wouldn't be a time where one of the students I described who are struggling are just left to their own devices during that time? This teacher would know that, you know, Michael is in need of supports and so this independent work isn't going to work for him if he goes off by himself with, you know.
Correct.
To, okay, I, because that's what I thought Ms. Berry was getting at, is what's going on in that situation for those kids? So that's encouraging to hear that. That would be a great.
And the other thing that's really important is that, is that everybody in that room has ownership of all of those kids.
Right.
So because of the PD that we provided and because of the way we've provided it, with special education teachers joining in with gender teachers and reading specialists and also giving them PD as well outside of that, everybody really is responsible for all of the kids and knows of.
Okay, so it's kind of MTSS in action.
It is. And, and, and that student who is, is a struggling reader, they will still have books in their box to read because they want to be like everybody else. They're going to have books at their level that they can read, but we're going to keep an eyeball on because we know that it's about four minutes and then we're done.
Give them a shot, right?
Right, because we want to build stamina and we want to build self-esteem and we, we want to be able to coach them. So, but that, thank you for.
Thank you, I do think that you sort of answered it, I just wanted to target that one issue because I thought she was getting at, I could be wrong, but.
No, that, that's good.
So I thought it was.
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Carr.
So, no real questions, just an observation. I personally like the flexibility of this à la carte mode, it allows you to pivot, change, address issues. May not be perfect, but I'm, I'm more and more convinced this is probably a good thing, this might be. And I like the use of data, I really, I'm a big data person, I think that also gives us a great deal of information at every level down to the individual to be able to adjust.
That's a big piece that Rock here got to track.
Yeah, that's good.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Mr. Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm calling this the time, so although I'm long-winded, I'll, I'll try and rate it a little bit. So, as a starting point, to me, I mean, every one of this, in this room is committed to all facets of education. I think we all are passionate about it. To me, if you have to pick one thing that is the most important part of the educational experience that we're delivering to our students, literacy is it. Okay, to me, it ranks above numeracy, above STEM, above arts, above social emotion, all of that, right? It's the most, that most fundamental skill of communication, right?
It's the, it's a great equalizer.
That's right. Okay, so, and this to me, I think, it makes me reflect back on one of my failures of chair, as chair of this committee, and Dr. Sullivan and I have had this conversation before, when we rolled this out, this is what we should have presented, right? So we should have done that three-tier process, we should have told people that we were, we were going to move in a different direction with literacy. Then we should have presented this and had a discussion about it and then we should have decided to implement, right? Because I think that, to me, and Dr. Collins, you know this, and Mr. Wonka, you know this, there have been a lot of concerns surrounding the unit system issue. And that is the common theme behind a lot of literacy curriculum. The term even curriculum is thrown around a lot, I think, you know, to me, a variety of different things. But generally speaking, I think it's a common denominator of concerns for, for parents, especially within the special education realm, that we use that, right? So this, I think, explained a lot of our rationale and that we acknowledge that there is negative or critical, I should say, assessments of the effectiveness of unit study. But acknowledging that and understanding that, we still think it's the right fit because of X, Y, and Z, you've outlined. So I think this is really, I feel like, first of all, it was a tremendous amount of work to put that together, I think it's a beautiful presentation, I really appreciated it. I wish we had done it when we rolled this out. I think it would have alleviated a lot of concerns for a lot of families, not everyone. I am hoping for that second part, I have questions, I have this, I'm, I'm hoping for that second phase of this where we now share with our families how we're going to evaluate effectiveness of our custom approach that we've come up with here, which is creative. And I think that, I remember saying this when we, when we first implemented this, I have faith in the educators that, that run our district. That's why you have your jobs, right? That's why we selected you, that's why we employ you, we have faith in what you do, you're, you're skilled, you're, you're highly educated. And I remember saying that and then I remember saying, oh, we need to keep an eye on that. We need to, I think it may be, I mean, I think that's a whole other presentation. How are we evaluating the effectiveness? How often are we doing that? And then how do we, how do we share that, that analysis with the families so that we are keeping ourselves accountable that we're saying, okay, we're looking at this all the time, making sure all the work, and if we need to make tweaks, we do that. How do we do that? When do we decide that something needs to change? I, I think that we need to present that to our families as well at some point. So that's, that's a thought. And I, like I said, I think that's a whole different conversation, but I think that we need to do that. And perhaps the end of the academic year or the summertime might be a good time, like after, because this has been two years or?
Two years, four, three, two, five, with, with the Reader's Workshop model, I mean, it's a study. And then this is year one truly for K2. So you need to give it about three years, but that doesn't mean we're not looking at data all along the way. So we are. And then also, next year, we'll be doing a literacy or TLA curriculum review process. So even though it will be focused on middle and high school, we're still going to look at elementary. We brought our instructional leadership team back together this year, we're going to continue that work extended to grade eight. So there's going to be some, there, there are going to be components of how are we going to look at it? What data are we looking at, which is part of Ross.
And how we bring families into that.
And then how to, right, and how do we bring, right, and all of those pieces. And there's, you know, all different kinds of data, like the last slide we showed you is kind of like, kind of a new term right here called street data. What are the people saying, like, what do we say? Not, not, not really the assessment pieces, but those other pieces. How does it feel for families? How does it feel for kids? How does it feel for teachers? What are they seeing, right? All those pieces. And so that's what, yeah, we are absolutely.
Okay, I just, I, sorry, I'm sorry.
We do have a, the SOE has already got us in a mechanism for evaluating what we're doing because we're tracking that, those literacy numbers.
And we'll have to, and we're going to have to respond to it every year.
You have a whole SOE of his base, really literacy and particular, and math, and particular special education.
Right, in overarching sort of 30,000-foot view of it, but I'm really trying to get into specifics of, you know, and it sounds like you're working on this. Look, I feel like we're, in terms of transparency of our, and accountability with our literacy program, I feel like we're, we're a little bit behind for the reasons I articulated at the beginning of my monologue here, okay? I think that, I think that we need to view this more in terms of, rather than, and I hear you, Dr. Collins, and that we have to have a, like a substantive amount of time in order to truly grasp the effectiveness of any one particular learning solution. But we need to view it as like, I, I just, the superintendent's evaluation is, is in my mind, right? You have the stage where you're presenting the goals, okay? And then you have the mid-year assessment and then you have the summative assessment, right? So that's, here we are, we, we've now clearly presented the goals and now it's time to figure out ways in which we share how we're looking critically at this throughout, over time to make sure that it seems like it's working for the students before that summative assessment of, okay, are we keeping this or are we going in a different direction?
Yeah, no, absolutely.
So, and I know you're doing it.
Right.
I feel like the issue is how are we, how are we broadcasting that to our, to our families? To our students.
Exactly, right, yeah.
So, so there's that, that's a general concern. So just take that in consideration. And amazingly, you didn't ask any of my questions this time around, which is the first time I can remember where you can ask the questions that I had.
I had a thing today, I'm so sorry.
Although, although Megan Berry had asked one of the questions, which is why I refrated, because like, my, my, another point is, we identified the, so we have solutions in our literacy programming to address phonics, phonetic awareness and comp. That covers three of those five major categories of literacy, right? So then that leaves us with fluency and vocabulary. Where, which pieces address those or is it all?
It's all, right, so the coding, right, the phonics, that allows for them to become more fluent readers, but also the more they practice reading, the more fluent they become. Vocabulary is built into everything that they're doing. So, so I didn't isolate them out, but it's, it's all interconnected. But certainly during that Reader's Workshop, vocabulary pieces, comprehension, you know, the fluency, because they are still reading to their teachers, they're still that happening where they're reading with their partners, you know, that's constant.
Okay. Penultimate point. The, some of the questions from the families submitted to me had to do with the budgetary aspect of this. How do we fund literacy curriculum? Is, are there any state funds that are allocated to that or is it all our town budget? And regardless of how it's, of where it comes from, how much are we talking about for this?
So, right, yeah, yeah, we can, yeah, so. So we actually use S R money. So we use that to purchase the, the study as, along with the, a lot of professional development for our teachers because that fell into how the money was allocated around COVID. um COVID, and so, yeah, so we use a lot of it for that. Yeah, it's been, that's been our.
Which was a good move.
Right.
Especially during COVID, right?
Right, exactly, just, you know.
Hard to teach with a mask and everything.
Yeah, but yes, so um so anyway, so that's that's how we got the seed money. That's where that came from. Um, and then I have it in my budget for professional development, a big part of my budget. And so I allocate um a certain amount of money out of our budget for professional development. There's literacy, there's science, there's social. If I can get grants, I get grants. Um, but we're starting to see those that that money's drying up a little bit. Um, we we got a grant this past year for Dessie in history, the the program that Dessie is pushing out. And it was supposed to be a two-year grant. Um, because of our Title One stats. So my concern is that they they were a little free with money for a few years, which was really nice. Um, a lot of these grants are competitive grants and typically um a district like Cohasset would be considered in those, but they kind of opened up a little bit, so we were really fortunate to get a bunch of money, but I will tell you, I'm pretty sure that's drying up. Um, and so we will have to be funding our professional development. I mean, I'll keep looking for grants. I will continue. Um, but I I just don't know. So anyways, so I haven't already, I haven't built it.
So and what about like the material? So that's PD. What about like the materials?
So, yeah, the teachers have, uh, so the principals have budgets for books, because one of the things about Rears Workshop is it's not non-textbook. It has kind of the Reader's Digest version of the story. We want real books in kids' hands. So they're building their classroom library. So we've allocated a certain amount of money in their budget every year to to purchase more books.
Okay, do you have any idea of the approximate or exact cost of our elementary literacy program?
In totality?
Yes.
You mean, everything I've spent so far?
PD, materials. And if you don't have it.
You mean, like, from the beginning?
Annually.
Oh, annually?
I'm sorry.
Okay, because I'm saying from the beginning?
No.
Uh, yeah, so the professional development is probably about thirty to forty thousand dollars for the both schools, um, in that professional development.
That in total.
In total, yeah.
Total, not each.
No, 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 not actually, no, that's the total for for the literacy and then um and then the the um K through two. That was uh more expensive than the three through five because they reworked it. And so that that number, I'm sorry, I did have it, now it's gone.
Well, so maybe, so maybe.
I can do that for you. I could.
Academic updates next time around.
Yeah, I can tell you what it was, yeah.
I just want to get, because people are asking about this, just so we can figure out how much elementary literacy costs us in a year.
Yeah, yeah, I can do that for you, yeah.
Um, especially where the S R is a one-time deal, right? So it's like.
Exactly, exactly. Right, yeah, yeah, I can I can talk that through, yeah, yeah. It ends up being, it was less than it was less than buying a textbook adoption.
All right, fine, final point.
Yeah.
Um, and this is pretty quick. Do we, so PD costs money.
Yep.
There are some, you know, we've got the uh, you know, got the Jen McPhillips is out there. We have the um, you know, Michelle, it's no longer Moser.
Yeah.
Yes, what is her last name now?
Betsky.
Betsky, okay. I I I keep on forgetting. I know approximately what it sounds like, and I always forget things, so sorry.
I say it because I remember.
We have those teachers that are incredible, right? Incredible literacy instructors, and I'm I'm just naming, I'm embarrassing them, but I'm not I'm not saying others aren't. I'm just naming. I know both of, I had, my children had both of them.
Yeah.
So I'm aware of it. They've also presented the school committee.
Yes.
Um, you know, um, Mrs. Betsky came in here and legit laid down a lesson at six o'clock at night with a bunch of, you know, third graders. And that's really hard to do. We have those
Yeah.
those 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 practitioners. I wonder, is there, has there, is there anybody thought to, because corporations do this, right? I'm sure Mr. Dial does this all the time. There's peer-to-peer.
Yes.
Like presentations and instructions, and like, it's actually kind of helpful, because especially I've imagined from a teaching perspective, because you're like, oh, I didn't even think that's a really like, Mrs. Lusti, that's a really good idea that she does. I'm going to like start doing that in my classroom. Do we do that?
Yes, we do. That's part of the, that's part of the embedded professional development.
Okay.
And setting up that, um, setting up that process so that teachers can do that. So your, the eventual is is that the consultants aren't there anymore, and then teachers are visiting teachers.
Right.
Um, the ultimate model is when a teacher puts on their door and they say, um, I'm doing literacy. There's my schedule for the for the week. And um, these are three things I'd like you to pay attention to, and I'd like you to give me feedback about that um when you come into my classroom and come on in anytime.
And that's happening?
That's where you want to get to, but it's happening now where teachers are watching other teachers, because that's the embedded professional development.
That's part of it.
And that's what they're teaching them to do, because it's a protocol that you use for that, right? Because you want to feel safe. There's language we use.
She'll learn so much from each other.
To make, right.
Okay.
And so and so that's happening now. I'll go in and a teacher will have taught a lesson, and then they come back, they debrief about it, and they all sit around the table and talk about um what they saw, the teacher talks, answers questions, and.
Teachers like that.
They do, they really.
Of course, it's engaging, right? Just like it is with students, students, so I guess you kind of touched on this with Mrs. Lusty, answered Mrs. Lust's question, but so you did kind of touch on something else. So, but all right, okay, so sorry to make you feel yourself, but I just, I was curious.
It's it's a lot to it. It's it's a lot.
That's it. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Great, thank you, Mr. Wong. Um, I just have a couple of questions. Uh, Mr. Roberts, you mentioned that, and I very much, as as a threshold winner, I very much appreciate everyone's candor. This is a complicated issue. It's great to recognize competing viewpoints because they're out there, and uh I would have been disappointed if we had just gotten a presentation that was rah rah rah, where they're where they're going that way. Um, but Mr. Roberts, you mentioned it in in specific terms. You said like, there's stuff out there, and if you were to look at it, you know, the the gravity of, this is what I heard, trying to paraphrase, the gravity is maybe to do it, do something different than what we're doing here. Did I hear that correct? In the current state of the discourse?
So there are news, news stories and things talking about, yes, that you should be shifting away from. Um, and usually the target of it is not comprehensive literacy, but it's it's units of study or or balanced literacy. And and balanced literacy is what we would have called this if we were using this without all the other stuff, without the foundations and the phonemic awareness piece.
And and what's the basis for that? Is it just the 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 lack of emphasis and focus on phonics, phoneme awareness that we're augmenting, or is there, are there other fundamental concerns?
I think there was, I think there are a number of factors. One is the pandemic and the drop in uh early literacy. Two is new research around how the brain works, um, and that's what we've looked into, and we're keeping our ears open for all that stuff to find out what new findings are. Third, I think, is is this idea that there's, and I don't want to, it it's a hard tightrope to to walk when when you have a a incredibly popular podcast called Soul the Story that you've all been Soul the Story. It's not true when you're using one of those products in your um district as one of your components. And to see that represented in a way that is overly simplified. But when that gets momentum, just as, you know, anytime, you know, unfortunately, a lot of these stories that go after public institutions become, they spread. Uh, just as, you know, who who's your least favorite person, politician, until it's time to to vote for a congressman.
So I guess um what I'm hearing, we don't need to specify, is that you are very aware of the criticisms of our program.
Yes.
And with the knowledge of the you still believe as a as a team that we are, we have made the right decisions, we're on the right path, with the caveat that you're keeping your eyes and ears open to look for defects, look for advances that we may not yet.
I believe that's the case for Cohasset.
And we're and we're augmenting it, as you mentioned. Probably.
It was a big decision to make. So, and Rock wasn't here when that decision was made. It was a massive decision to make, because all of that information was out there. And to make the decision to take something on that may not be popular, but that truly believed is good for kids as long as we're watching it and making sure we put all the components together and that we invest in our teachers and give them professional development. I had many sleepless nights over it. It would be much easier to say, yeah, I might take that right off that shelf. But we have a very, we're unique here. We are small. We have strong teachers. We had the ability to provide the professional development that is necessary. Again, Rock already talked about it. We didn't have that. Wouldn't do it. You just wouldn't. You can't. It's too much of a lift. We even talked about creating our own curriculum. Our own, we talked about it. And I looked at the teachers and I said, could we do it? Yes, we could. Would it be a massive lift? It would, and I'm not sure that that's the best use of our time. Let's take what we know and make it ours. And so that was the consensus. Um, but I appreciate the question because I really questioned myself many times and and had to really own that I was fearful to step in front of this. And that probably is part of why the rollout went the wrong way, did a little bit, because I was like, I can't believe we're going to do this. But if it were my own kids, this is what I would.
That wasn't one person's failure, though, Dr. Scolons.
It was.
It's a weird team here, and none of us identified that.
Correct, but but I'm like owning my part of that.
Sure.
Um, and and for my grandchildren right now, this is what I would want for them. Absolutely without a doubt. And if, and so there's my soapbox for a minute.
So that's, and that's fantastic. And so, step aside, one other point, um, but before I get to that, presentation was awesome. This is exactly what I was hoping to to get. I know we'd spend a lot of time, and I will say personally, as as a parent of students who are readers, uh, I appreciate what we've put together here and um and and thank you for taking that risk. One element that we didn't talk on, and maybe it's not really literacy, but one element where I do think we have a little bit of improvement, maybe it's adjacent to this, is spelling. Doesn't feel like we're getting the attention. Just watching my kids go through the 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 journey of the class at schools. It does seem like spelling is a challenge, and that seems, maybe that's the reverse of phonics and phoneme awareness.
Yeah.
But that's one where where I just, I just see, as as good as readers as they are, they're not, they're just not good spellers.
Yeah, our writing, that's that's an area that we want to continue, that we need to do more work on, but we can't do it all at once. There is writing happening, but how, you know, put in some of those pieces.
It's not even just the writing, though.
But writing.
Literally just getting the words spelled correctly.
Correct, but the writing, the process of writing increases spelling. So, right, so that's that's why I say it. Um, I do think that, you know, the 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 spelling test on Friday hasn't really been shown to really do what you think it will do. Kids cram it in, and they still don't remember, and they don't use it in their writing or in their answers and their responses. So those are things that we want to work on, because we do see that too. Um, and our reading specialists are working on it. That's why they've worked on doing multi-syllabic um modules with kids and teaching the teachers how to do that, how do you break apart those words and increase that? Um, and so we are looking at that, because I I would agree, we see that too with spelling.
And the hard thing about English language in particular is our spelling is just somewhat arbitrary and.
Lots of. There's the code, and then they're all the exception.
Exactly.
And you have to, and I think I think you're right. You can learn this stuff by rote memorization, which retain maybe ten percent of it, or by reading it and writing it on a page. And I guess the the element of writing is making sure it's corrected.
Right.
And uh, so, all right, thank you so much for this. Uh, this was, this was tremendous, and really, I I I hopefully hopefully helped people in the community and certainly helped me really understand what's going on. So I will just check to see if there's no more public comments. I will, I will close this one out. And we'll move on to our.
Thank you, Rock.
Thank you so much for all you did for us.
Move on to our student service, happy with our director's steward services, uh, Mrs. Wong.
So in the interest of time and in the interest of our laptop battery, I'm going to present this orally to you tonight. Um, in terms of IEP meetings, which I always present, we uh we had fifty IEP meetings during the month of April. And they were across the board, out of district, elementary, secondary. I have to say, our numbers continue in terms of how are we getting through the the MTSS process? What are the results of those? Um, what is coming in through, you know, parents and teachers, so on and so forth? Um, there were four parent requests that were, you know, Cohasset parents at the elementary level. Um, it is a privilege to always honestly test students when parents are concerned. All four came out not requiring services, which is also a good thing. It is very relieving for parents. It is, you know, good news on the part of the child, and it also brings enables us to bring that child to the next level. Well, then what is the appropriate way to do to support this child? In fact, we do have some concerns and some worries, and that's where our MTSS process is really kind of thriving right now. So that's always good news. Um, and there were two that came from, as we have said before, kind of, you know, not Cohasset parents, students who may have been at private schools or um in through early intervention, who um did qualify at the secondary level, um, one that was eligible and one that was not eligible. Um, but what the data continues to show us is that, you know, all of those processes are kind of alive and well, continuing on the trajectory that we want them to continue on. Our um our parent surveys have come in, again, this month, a hundred percent of them very strong in the solidly agree and strongly agree in terms of how they understand their child's IEP meetings and are satisfied with the results of what's going on with their child's teams and so on and so forth. So for the parents who respond to that, you know, just really good feedback on that continuing in a very positive way. Um, one other thing, very quickly, that I just wanted to, you know, make sure that parents are aware, we went out, you know, very early this year in terms of notifying parents around the students who are eligible for extended school year. Getting that information out to parents, getting, you know, those ideas of dates, schedules, so on and so forth. About ninety percent of them are out to parents. We obviously, it is, you know, just the very beginnings of May, still have some meetings to continue with. Um, you know, and as soon as we have those meetings, that E S Y information gets out to those families. But for all that we currently know, all of that information is out there in families, and um and we're we're very well planned for E S Y and very happy about that.
Great, thank you, uh, Mr. Wong. Any comments or questions from the committee?
Yeah, of course, please.
I was thinking it might be interesting, understanding that an IEP meeting occurs and and an IEP is developed. But then sometimes there's some back and forth, and there's some discussion about it, and and and.
As they should be, as they should be.
Team process. And I'm just wondering if in, if there's a way to show in the data that you present to show sort of how many sort of open cases still exist um sort of over time, um, because I think that's also a part of the process, like, is the process running in in a way that any sort of discussions are resolved in a timely manner? Quick and easy manner?
So.
Or whether, how long, uh, some of those kind of can stretch out for, you know, not because no one's doing their job timely, but that that there there are issues within the.
So within the very process, parents have thirty days to respond to the IEP. And then if we do not get a response to the IEP, it is our due diligence to reach out and to use some of the other processes that are in place if we are still not getting a response, whether it means we send that IEP to the B S E A or whatever it is to get a response. And also, if for some reason there continues to be a disagreement after the IEP that was sent out, and parents perhaps agree with part of it and not another part, or don't agree with any of it, we have a meeting on that within a certain timeframe of getting that IEP back and continue that rolling. So all of those kind of things are built into that process to make that happen.
Yes, but can, is there a way of sharing some of that data about how many are closed within, I'm using the word closed. A better word for that, but how many IEPs are closed within that thirty-day process? How many are still outstanding from those meetings that occurred in the month of May? So you have the meetings that occurred in April. How many of those are still outstanding?
Yep.
Um, and I think sort of understanding that would be helpful to to sort of understand the flow of the process.
Yeah, absolutely.
I love that idea. So that's a, that would be great to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions, comments from members? I just have one observation. Mr. Wong, I think you should not have your laptop every time. I think that was, that without the slides, you did a phenomenal job. Straight to the point. That was, that was, that was great. So I know it can be difficult when you've come thinking one way, you like those, you're hurtful, but excellent job with uh dealing with that, and honestly, I was, I I got it all very quickly. Thank you. So uh, very much appreciate it. So that'll close off.
But that chart that you do is really helpful.
We want to see the chart. But um, but you know, it's talk, maybe, you know, you you were talking about the key points, uh, you know, I I very much enjoyed it, so. Budget, resources, and governance. We've talked a lot about budget, resources, and governance over the past uh, the past, but I think we're we're through the through the process now for the most part. And our director of finance is ill, so um unless there's any any quick questions, comments from the committee on budget, I don't think we have any substantive items to cover. So moving on, uh, food service, again, a placeholder item that. So moving on, food service, again, a placeholder item that we have just because it reminds the committee that we are in very complex operations. Our food services continues to get accolades from what I can tell, but any comments, thoughts on, concerns on food service?
I finally met the chef. What a great guy.
Great guy. We do, we're accolades.
Fantastic.
We do have him on the docket for our future.
Doing, just what a nice, you know, just. This upcoming year?
No, but the next couple. And we also have the food services officer too.
Oh, great, great, too. And Craig and I are going to do another, we have to reschedule, so we have to do elementary.
Food service.
I digress. Look forward to that.
It's related to food service.
Yes.
So that'll close off budget, resources, governance, we'll want to continue relations, communication. I do have on here school facility committee update and discussion. The intent here was to have us present and vote on the revised charge of the school committee. Mr. Rong reminded me that we're not quite ready to do that because I think we're going to meet with the school facilities committee. Is that correct?
We're just gonna, I just need to, we just need to submit it to the school facilities committee to discuss how they would want to restrict the charge. They have some agency there and then submit tho- that draft to us and then we'll discuss it and then decide on a final charge.
So and I did talk to just informally Mr. Earls at a baseball game. Our kids play baseball together. And I don't think there's any.
Only two members present.
Who know, you don't have those in the stands. No, they're the only two members present for the record. Strike that for the minute. But but even so, that should, that should be come next time, but we're gonna, there's nothing to debate at the, on that agenda item. So with that, we'll move on to reports of school committees, subcommittees and liaisons. I have none. And I think we have a, do we have anything else on our policy committee?
Not to discuss right this second.
Okay, so I know, I just wanted to make sure I have this.
Mr. Chair, I have a in, I I maybe, I almost raised it in the student services update, but I have an ad hoc committee issue that I'd like the school committee to address. That is the now that this Serona has given her notice and she's no longer going to be with us as of the next academic year. Dr. Skon will be running the selection process for Serona's replacement and we need a school committee rep on that board. I would like to nominate Mrs. Lesky to do it if she willing or anyone else. This is my nomination, but I I I'd like us to to figure out who that's going to be so Dr. Skon knows the school committee rep is going to be in the process.
So I don't think we have that. That seems like a pretty important thing to have had on the agenda. So when do we, and I, and the reason I want to mention this because I don't have in my head exactly next dates and I wanted to do an actual recognition, but yes, Ms. Rong is is leaving. That was announced. And I guess it's a bit, I have not.
So here's, so first of all, I figured we would give proper recognition to Mr. Rong closer to her departure, not yet, just like we're doing for Dr. Sullivan. He's not quite away yet either, but I just, so Dr. Skon will be sort of doing this fair degree of celerity. So I feel like, I don't know that it's a major issue to us to to post. I think it's, I think that if we think, I mean, I don't know that anyone really has any it's really our decision and and just to, I I would just prefer that Dr. Skon knows who the school committee contact is going to be for that.
For.
To sit on the selection committee, like, you know, there's going to be, need to be a school committee member that sits on that committee to interview the finalists and, you know, candidates and everything like that.
Do we need to vote on that?
No.
Okay.
I think we can, I mean, I think we just appoint someone. We don't need to vote, but I think there should be an agreement. I think we should all, like, and I was just suggesting that you and I just did the superintendent one.
Well, I know, I'm not.
So we've already used our, we know, but it's just like, and also people need other, people need opportunities to do it. So I don't, I don't know, and I know that Mr. Kearney is, you know, the the poor guy in his last, you know, month of service. You don't know the logistics of that. And.
I mean, if you need me to, I would.
So and I I and and, you know, and so I know Mr. Carter took another, a new job, so I don't know. I I just, I thought in.
If you're willing to, if you're willing to to participate as the school committee rep, I don't know if this, if this is news to you.
I will do it. We don't need to have a conversation on it.
There we go.
Perfect.
Okay.
You can always reach out to me if you want.
I will, don't worry.
Individually.
Ironically, our next agenda, this topic is not reasonably anticipated.
Maybe that was the appropriate time.
And I guess we could, I did not anticipate that topic, but I just feel like it should have. I I don't believe we have any minutes for this meeting.
Continue to remain the problem. Sorry about that.
No, no worries. The secretary is important and and you do a commendable job.
Sorry, we lost without, yeah.
Do we have any suggestions for food related items?
Dr. Sullivan talked about having Officer Taylor come in as well as.
Yep, we we discussed that and also, Mr. Cordone.
Yep.
Will be coming and it was mentioned being, giving a little more information regarding school choice.
And that could, you know, that could be a summer thing.
Was also mentioned. Those were the three.
Spotlights on Panama and Europe, and you've done Panama.
Yeah, yeah.
Haven't done the Europe one yet.
No, I thought I, we can look at that, yeah.
And then, yeah, I'm just, I had to note because.
I think that's great. So your point would be good to have.
The Panama group had come forward and wanted to do it, so we we got them going first.
The food service presentation, I know we had talked about him including his academic year twenty-four, twenty-five plan for food service rollouts.
We were kind of thinking about that towards the, like, one of the last meetings.
And maybe.
Because of that reason, correct?
Well, we're still.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
And maybe he can bring food as well.
He he brings food everywhere and that's a great idea.
Mr. Chair, the SRO presentation I had down, we had want, we had interested, interesting, I I know that Officer Taylor appreciates sort of given us giving him specific, you know, items that we'd like to hear about rather than like a general. So the RAD program, which which he has, which which has been a lot of success with and he just, he has a lot to share about that. He actually was talking to me about the, at the US River Valley ceremony that the car had organized. And then like substance abuse diversion efforts for the summertime.
Yes, super. That's excellent.
So I'm just resetting the notes I brought to last agenda.
I think these notes are great.
I don't know if this is under the curvy of the school committee, but transitioning for Mrs. Shannon and how that works, if there's a transition plan.
Yes, it is. It's not something that we would necessarily bring up in an open search discussion, but happy to chat with you.
I just wanted to make sure there was one.
One thing by way of a thought for you, when I, and I'm doing this in Marshfield, is an entry. So the entry plan involves the transition plan and you're really drawing data from a multitude of sources, including the data you get from just speaking to people. And you're creating a sort of action plan based on that data that that often in its scope encompasses transitions.
And I will, I will share that Ms. Shannon has expressed not only willingness, but eagerness to meet with the committee members, in addition to everyone else. And we did finally, until it was on mine, execute the contract last week. So she is now bound and 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 obligated to come, come do this.
Just so folks know, we're working very closely with her. She's been super communicative and she's been meeting with all the leadership team, so she's, she's going to be great.
Being the new kid is hard sometimes, and so I just want to make sure.
Yeah, yeah, that's great. That's great. And I'm sure she's open for ideas.
And and you should expect some help. So with that, there is a reason to move into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. It will be brief, but with that, what I will do is request a motion to move into executive session, not to reconvene and general session thereafter. And that way we just leave, we'll turn off the video, which won't miss anything because it will be reconvening a journey out of the executive session.
Okay, so you're just, just to be clear, the agenda says a different reason, so I just want to make sure that the reason you're stating is.
To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, number three.
Yeah, oh, oh, okay, the whole agenda.
That was, that was.
There you go. All right, perfect.
Perfect. So motion made by Mr. Kearney, do I have a second? Some motion taken by Mr. Carr. It is a roll call vote, so Mr. Kearney.
Aye.
Mrs. Lesky?
Aye.
Mr. Carr?
Aye.
Mr. Callan?
Aye.
Mr. Dial?
Aye.
All right, so we'll now move into executive session and thank you all for for joining us at home and on Facebook and wherever you might be.
Good day.
We say that we will not.
We will not be agreeing with him.